Alrighty, good afternoon, everybody. And now I will call this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees to order and pursuant to, excuse me, pursuant to governance directives. We are having emergency directive 006, section one. And it has been extended to other directives. Most recently, we're having this, conducting this meeting via Zoom. Just as a reminder, we're going to receive public comment via email only. We've received many of them up until now, so I trust that we're all up to date. And then there'll be more that come in as we meet. There'll be times during the meeting that we'll ask to make sure that everyone is watching that public comment. And all those public comments for the public again will be included in the public record as minutes. But once again, we do not read public comments aloud during these sessions. These are the same protocols we followed for many months during 2020. And we're going to just pull those same ones forward and follow them in 2021. Alright, you can follow us on live stream. You're probably already on that youtube.com. And you can go to the Washoe County School District channel and find this right there. That being said, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Alright, Ms. Madam President. President Angela Taylor.
I'm here.
Vice President Andrew Caddell.
Here.
And I am here, Trustee Calvert.
Here.
Trustee Church.
Here.
Trustee Nicolette.
Here.
Trustee Thigpen.
Here.
Student Representative Victoria Gomez.
Here.
Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We will now have the pledge of allegiance. And JJ is going to share a screen. And I will just lead us in that. I have my seat because I'm still connected to my unit that I'm always sent to at the meetings. I'm just home now. So let's start together, one, two, three. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Alright, thank you very much, JJ. Thank you for putting that on the screen. And thanks to everyone for, for standing. We'll go on into the meeting and let's see, we're looking for an motion to adopt the agenda, unless someone has a desire to make any agenda changes.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Trustee Thigpen, seconded by Vice President Cottle. Any discussion on adopting the agenda? Alright, hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Alright, opposition? Alright, the motion is carried. The agenda is adopted as presented. We're going now to our consent agenda. All consent agenda items, just as a reminder to everyone, are considered routine. And so therefore, they may be acted upon as, acted upon by the Board of Trustees as a whole, as a group, commonly called the consent agenda. And so we'll be looking at this time to see if there are any public comments, any public comments that have come in since the agenda. We know we have, we've got plenty of public comments, some about things that are not on the agenda. Just make a note, if you have not had a chance as a trustee to, to read those, make sure you do so at this time, because that will, we want to make sure we call for a public comment before we take any action. But those would have come in before now, so we should be caught up on that. Okay? Any, any pleasure of the Board to accept the consent agenda items as presented or to pull something off to indicate so at this time? If not, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Alright, thank you, Vice President Cottle. There's a motion to accept the consent agenda. Is there a second? Okay, I heard several, so I'll just go with, I'll go with Trustee Calvert, because she doesn't speak up that often, so we'll get her on the record right now. Our vice moved and seconded it to adopt the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Thank you for turning your mics on as you vote for the record. Thank you for that. Any opposition? Alright, the motion is carried. Let the record show that it is unanimous. Again, this is our public comment period. In fact, I'm going to jump over to my public comment right now. It is not in person, but we do want to make sure and see if there are any public comments that have come in since we started the meeting. And no, there's only, there's, oh, exactly, even the public comment. I think it's just to me. Okay, alright, so there are no new public comments that have come in. So we'll go ahead and move on to agenda item four.
President Taylor. Would you like me to read the names of the public comments?
I'm sorry, yes, those who have come in that are not about, thank you, JJ.
The Board received emails from Nicole Chulern, Joe Morabito, Kelly Stokes, Stephanie Nightingale, Carol Sullivan, Valerie Fianaca, Janet Butcher, Amy Christensen, R. Crump, Ally Trombley, Bruce Foster, John Giozy, Pablo Nava Duran, Richard J., Jackie Olson, and Shannon Cooley.
Thank you very much, JJ. Thank you for not letting me miss that. Okay, we thank you for all who sent in their public comments. Again, if you'd like to send in public comments, you can do so throughout the meeting. That email address again is publiccomments@washoschools.net. And any public comment that we receive will be added to the official record of the meeting will be added to the minutes. I have gotten an email from someone, so I just want to double check. Is the YouTube channel working? John, if you can just confirm that. Someone just sent me an email saying it is not.
Hey, President Taylor, yes, I'm watching it right now. It looks good and sounds good.
Okay, okay, so hopefully that person can just work out whatever may be happening on there. And certainly, we want to make sure, especially because we're virtual, that people can watch. Okay, I did see Ms. Anderson pop up on the screen with a Washoe County School District shirt on, ready for agenda item 4.01. This is our legislative item discussion. Welcome, Lindsay. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, President Taylor, and appreciate you noticing my double branding today, both my background and my shirt really showing my team spirit here. So thank you for having me again, Lindsay Anderson, Government Affairs for the Washoe County School District. I just have a brief update for you today. You know, we're, we're less than 50 days left now in the legislative session. And unlike all the previous deadlines, the deadline on Friday that we alluded to at the last meeting actually stuck. So we did see a number of bills that did not make that deadline, and so we refer to them as dead. Approximately 78 of those bills were bills that we were tracking for one reason or another, and not all high priority bills, but certainly we expected to have some access on the district. And so just quickly, I'll run through kind of some highlights. I won't read them all. You know, I'm happy to provide an additional report if that's necessary. But we did see, as I'm sure as of interest to you, both the bills regarding the governance of the school board being appointed. Both of those did not make the deadline. Both Speaker Fryerson and Senator Keke Ferris' bill did not receive action before last Friday. In addition, other bills related to the school district are related to collective bargaining, for example. We did see Senate Bill 142 not make the deadline, which was related to our ending fund balance and potential changes to legislation around that. Assembly Bill 122, which contemplated kind of a virtual pre-K expansion. That bill did not make it through the deadline. Maybe not directly related to education, but you've heard me talk about before, both of the bills from the Nevada Association of Counties, as well as the Nevada League of Cities related to some modifications to property tax that would have been helpful going forward. Neither of those bills made the deadline. Along with Senate Joint Resolution 8, which was from Senator Ratty, again, related to property tax, did not make the deadline. So it looks like we will not be seeing property tax reform during this legislative session. Let's see, I'm trying to pick out the ones I think are most exciting. Senate Bill 120 also did not make the deadline. That's one that, as originally drafted, would have gone back to some previous language related to having administrators reapply for their jobs every five years. I know we've talked about that in past board meetings, and so we will not be seeing that bill move forward. So again, I don't want to rehash those. It's always a little anticlimactic. We certainly did see some, but a lot of them made it through, certainly at the 11th hour. We still have our, you know, priority bills that we're watching. Assembly Bill 57, which was sponsored by the school district. I'm hoping to have a hearing in the Senate Education Committee either next week or the week after. Basically, for the next 10 days, the legislators themselves will be pretty tied up on floor sessions voting on all the bills that came out of committee last Friday. So there's not going to be many committee hearings, not going to be a lot of access to legislators in the next 10 days. But I expect after that, we'll start seeing bill hearings again, including our own. We'll continue to watch bills like Senate Bill 173, which is a potential framework for summer school. As I know, we're planning summer school right now and the implications of that legislation on what our plans may be, as well as things like Senate Bill 215 related to competency-based education, as we're planning for some of our distance learning activities for next session. So I'll just leave it at that. There's about 30 bills that I would consider kind of a higher priority for the Washoe County School District going forward. So if there are any of those you'd like to speak more about, I'm happy to do that. Otherwise, I'm happy to stand for questions from the trustees. Thank you, President.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any questions from the Board for Ms. Anderson? I see Trustee Church and then Vice President Cottle.
Very quickly, Trustee Church here, the Holocaust bill for teaching Holocaust.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Actually, I have to say, I'm a little bit surprised we saw two bills related to the Holocaust move forward on the deadline last Friday. They have very similar content. I would say the difference is that Assembly Bill 56, as sponsored by the Lieutenant Governor, includes some language around explicitly the Armenian genocide in addition to the Holocaust, while Assembly Bill 231, sponsored by Assemblywoman Cohen, is the Holocaust and other genocides. And in the hearing, there was some frustration from stakeholders about whether or not specific other genocide should be included. But we did see both of those bills make it through the deadline last Friday.
Thank you, Trustee Church, Vice President Cottle, and thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Lindsay. Any discussions on funding specifically to a hybrid introduction of the new funding formula versus full implementation that was passed two years ago?
Thank you, Vice President Cottle. I really appreciate that question. I should have included that in my initial remarks. There was a K-12 subcommittee, so it's a subcommittee of both money committees that met last week. And ultimately, you know, no decisions were made, but I would say it's pretty obvious that they're moving towards full implementation and away from the hybrid implementation, as was recommended by the Governor. I think there were some logistical barriers that I think they felt wouldn't be able to be overcome in a hybrid system. So we did see, I would say, leaning towards a full implementation with a number of items to continue hashing out to see what that looks like. But again, no decisions were made. We're still at the subcommittee level where they're having conversation, but I would say at the subcommittee level, a strong preference towards full implementation.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. I would say, if the feeling is, as we go through the month of April and early May, that that's likely where we're going, the Board should probably get an updated budget projection on a full implementation. Because I don't, I think we did a hybrid in our preliminary budget, so that would be helpful for us, everybody to see. So thank you.
Yeah, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Mathers, but I know he was watching those conversations and is fully briefed on kind of the discussion. I'll just add quickly, while we're talking about the budget, that this morning, there was a subcommittee meeting related to how the state plans to use their portion of the federal funds that are coming in. And so we'll be, I think, incorporating that information into what we do going forward to make sure we're not duplicating efforts. But a lot of moving pieces as it relates to the budget. And, you know, I know how frustrating it is. I don't mean to minimize it, but I really don't think we'll have any final information until June 1st. So a lot of things could change between now and then.
Thank you, Vice President Cottle and Ms. Anderson. Mr. Mathers, I saw your, 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 I saw your camera come on. Do you have anything to add on that, since that meeting was, I know was just this morning? Anything you'd like to throw in?
No, Lindsay covered it well. As Lindsay indicated, there are many, many unknowns, so we'll keep watching.
Thank you, Mark. Alright, any other questions for Ms. Anderson?
I do. I can have one more, please?
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, Lindsay, is, it's on our bill, AB 57, is, I believe that's passed the Assembly, so it's now in the Senate. Is NDE still holding their strong in their opposition?
Thank you, Vice President Cottle. Since the bill was voted on in the Assembly and not amended, we have not had any additional conversation about their position on the bill. As we get closer to having a hearing on the Senate side, perhaps we can revisit their position. But I don't have any new information about that right now.
Great, thank you.
If I could just add something real quick on that for Vice President Cottle. It really is around the, the two years.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Excuse me, anything else for Ms. Anderson? Agenda item 4.0, 4.1, I should say. Okay, I think that's everything. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. I know there's a lot going on, a lot of things that you're keeping up with. So thank you for squeezing us in to, to keep us up to date. And thank you for the updates that we give electronically as well.
No problem. Thanks for having me.
Alright, thank you. Let's move on to the agenda. Let's see, I'm sliding this down there, but it is budget time, budget time. We're going down to agenda item 5.01. This is adoption of the Washoe County School District Board Resolution 21-002, a resolution providing for, number one, the issuance of general obligation limited tax, which is limited tax, medium-term bond series 2021 in an aggregate amount not to exceed $3,150,000. This is for acquiring textbooks and other instructional materials for the district. And two, providing the form, terms, and conditions of the bond. And number three, authorizing the superintendent or chief financial officer of the district to accept a binding bid for the bond. And this is for possible action. I'm going to turn it over to our CFO, Mr. Mark Mathers.
Thank you, Madam President, trustees. As you just said before you, for your consideration, is a resolution authorizing the sale of one-year medium-term bonds totaling no more than 3.15 million for the purchase of K-5 science textbooks and instructional materials. So as background on this, the Board approved a resolution in November of last year for the issuance of two series of medium-term bonds in total not to exceed $7.75 million. The first of those series, we came to you in December and sold, and that was in the amount of 1.55 million of medium-term bonds, actually four-year bonds for the purchase of buses and a few fleet vehicles. So today, what we have is the second series. For, for your consideration, again, 3.15 million. These would go to provide new textbooks for all elementary grades in the areas of science. It has been many, many years since we've had new textbooks in that area. These would actually be one-year notes. So you'll remember, medium-term bonds are actually per state law, any bonds with a maturity or term of less than 10 years. They go through a separate authorization process through the Department of Taxation. Back in November, taxation gave their approval to both, both of the series, both of the transactions. The difference between these bonds and the ones sold in December for fleet are that these bonds would be paid by the general fund. So this is a general fund obligation. And as we indicated in the staff report, our original plan was issue 6.3 million of bonds, since that's the total cost of K-5 science textbooks. But in, in looking at kind of where we stood, we found a more cost-efficient manner, which was to pay cash for half of that out of this year's budget, and then debt finance the other half, the 3.15 million that would be paid next fiscal year. So this was something that came up during the fiscal year 21 budget discussions. The Board asked for us to look at ways to accelerate the purchase of all science textbooks for all elementary grades in one shot, which gives us better pricing, of course, but also just accelerates the, the new K-5 textbooks for all grades in elementary schools. So with that quick outline, again, we are asking for your approval of this resolution, which authorizes the superintendent or myself to execute all of the financing documents to consummate the sale. We did receive four bids for these medium-term bonds this morning, and Zion's Bank is the winning bidder, if you so choose to approve this resolution. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mathers. I want to check and make sure, so I don't forget really, if we have any, do we have any public comment on this, JJ, before I ask for the pleasure of the Board?
We do not.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Mathers, again. Any questions, comments on the presentation from Mr. Mathers? Or is there a desire for a Board member to make a motion, as he is requesting? I will say this, I'm excited about, about getting the science textbooks and really completing that. We were so far behind. It took so long to get there. And so I'm just excited about, thank you for, for the Board for asking me to speed that up when we did. I know that's quite a while ago. And really for staff for finding a way to make it happen. And, and of course, Mark, for you, find a way to, to pay for it. You know, it's funny how they, they like us to pay for new curriculum.
Yes, they do.
So, yes, they do. But, but it's just true, super important for our students. So I'm very, very excited about being where we are today. So, Trustee Thigpen, I see your hand.
Thanks, Madam President. Thank you, Mark, for this. I think this is very important. I just had a quick question. With the issue of these bonds, we'll, we'll still have a balanced budget, right? This won't affect that at all?
Absolutely, we'll still, still have a balanced budget. This does not impact it. This was budgeted, yes.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Thigpen. I see Dr. Nicolette.
I would like to make a motion.
Awesome.
The Board of Trustees adopts Washoe County School District Board Resolution 21-002, a resolution providing for, one, the issuance of a general obligation limited tax medium-term bond series 2021 for acquiring textbooks and other instructional materials for the district. Two, providing the form, terms, and conditions of the Board. And three, authorizing the superintendent or chief financial officer of the district to accept a binding bid for the bond.
Second.
Alright, there's a, there's a race to second new science textbooks. I like it. I like it. We'll take, Trustee, Trustee Thigpen spoke on us, we'll take Clerk Manette's second. Move by Dr. Nicolette. Any further discussion? Alright, seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Any opposition? Alright, the motion carries. The motion carries. And let the record show that it is unanimous. Fantastic. I see the superintendent clapping. That's right, this is definitely something to clap for. Definitely something to clap for. So outstanding, outstanding. Okay, we're going to move on to agenda item 6, 6.01. This is a presentation to the Board regarding important updates in career, or CTE, career tech and technical education with respect to workforce development and career readiness. This is for information and for discussion only. And I saw early on, I saw Mr. Josh Hartong jump on, and I think Kathy Smith is with him. We will turn it over to you. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you, President Taylor.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. President Taylor, I'm going to go ahead and do a brief introduction. Yes, this is our update. We are very thankful for Mr. Hartzog and Ms. Smith. They rescued us and made this presentation early, so want to acknowledge their efforts. As you're going to see today, they have a very thorough presentation around career and technical updates specifically towards workforce development and career readiness. And unfortunately, Kathy Smith, our coordinator in Signature Academies in Career and Tech Ed, isn't going to be able to join Mr. Hartzog because she had to make another appointment. So with that, Josh, go ahead and take it away.
Good afternoon, esteemed members of the Board. Thank you for having us here, as well as Superintendent McNeil and the rest of our district leadership and members of the public who are tuning in. It's my pleasure to be with you this afternoon. And Kathy Smith had a dentist appointment, which she could not get out of. So there are very few appointments that are not get out of a bowl, aside from this one, aside from that one, which she could not reschedule. So it's my pleasure to be with you this afternoon and walk you through some of the things that we've been doing in the Department of Signature Academies and career technical education around workforce development and career readiness. I'm going to take a moment to give you a little bit of background on our CTE assessments. This was one of the questions that came to us via the Board and how our CTE assessments filter into preparing our students for the workforce. So a little bit of background, again, our programs, for the most part, are three-year CTE programs that students opt to complete their programs. At the end of their programs, they take a couple of different standardized statewide assessments. The first assessment that they take is a general workplace readiness skills assessment, which determines their level of fitness for entering the world of work and career. That is a common assessment that is across all of our CTE programs. And then depending, depending on which program they're in, they'll take a program-specific end-of-program assessment. And if they can pass both of those assessments, and if they have maintained a 3.0 GPA throughout their course of study, that entitles them to receive what is called the Nevada Certificate of Skill Attainment. And that is a skill of, that is a certificate or certification that they can leverage as they're looking to enter into a post-secondary training program, whether that be with a four-year university or a two-year community college program, or some other kind of post-secondary training program. It also entitles them to access a number of articulated credit with one of our primary educational partners, that would be TMCC. So depending on the CTE program that they are successfully completing, they could have access from anywhere to three to six credits, to upwards of 20 to almost 30 community college credits, again, depending on what program they take. So when we talk about CTE assessments, those assessments are definitely important in terms of signifying in many ways that our students are ready to get on that path and take the next step in the world of work and career. And then just for informational purposes, the state, you know what, I'm going to, I'm getting feedback here. Maybe I could speak a little bit louder, so I'll try that without my headphones. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, so when we talk about these assessments, just for the information of the Board, the state Nevada Department of Education is looking at phasing out these assessments in the next couple of years and replacing them such that at the end of each program, a student simply takes the industry-recognized certification or credentialing assessment that lines up with their program. So for example, in cybersecurity, you would not necessarily be taking the end-of-program assessment from the state. You would simply be taking any one of a number of certification exams that gives you an industry-level credential. And I'll, I'll actually go over some examples of those industry-level credentials, because North Valleys High School is making tremendous strides in this space. So that will add a level of clarity there. In terms of internship opportunities that we have across our district, I am super pleased and humbled to let the Board know that we have been able to maintain several of our internship opportunities, even with COVID in a virtual format. And that's due in no small part to several members of our team, as well as our important industry partners, especially Renowned Health, I would give them a shout-out, as well as KUNR. And then we have a number of other local business and industry partners, which has allowed us to continue to facilitate a general STEM-related internship. And all these internships have been able to operate virtually. All of the students tune in and have conferences with employees from these various partners. They have the chance to ask questions. They have the chance to take virtual tours of facilities, especially with respect to Renowned Health. And it's been a tremendous ability for us to be able to offer that opportunity for our kids, especially given circumstances around COVID. And then in a typical year, we also facilitate individual internships for students as well. That has been on hold, but that especially is a significant opportunity for our students, especially our seniors who are looking to... Especially our seniors who are looking to go from a broader, um, experience of a particular field or a career field. And really zero into having like a clinical experience with renown where they're actually partnered up. With, um, a mentor onsite and they're they're performing more individualized, um, activities and experiences. In terms of, um, pre-apprenticeship, so this is, uh, especially an area that we would like to grow into. When I say pre-apprenticeship, that's also interchangeable with the word youth apprenticeship. And that is not to be confused with registered apprenticeships. So registered apprenticeships are typically for, um, adults who are aged eighteen plus. And they are operating in the world of work and they are receiving a paycheck and they are receiving some kind of post-secondary training. So an apprenticeship is really. A post-secondary educational opportunity. Pre-apprenticeships are a new space that we're looking to grow into, which is kind of that bridging that gap between an internship, which is strictly academic credit based. And then a pre-apprenticeship, which is a little bit of an internship type opportunity, but the students are receiving pay. So. Um, it's ultimately what we want our students to be able to experience before they've graduated from high school. They still have that support of being in a secondary, um, educational program. Ergo, they're still students, but they're they're making their way out into the world of work and career. And our primary partner in this effort. Would be Cheryl Olson, who's the director of the Nevada Alliance for Youth Apprenticeships. And our next, um, best move that we're making into this space is working on a pre-apprenticeship opportunity with renown. Again, one of our primary. Work-based learning partners and providing them a number of career paths, um, such that they can. Engage in pre-apprenticeships in a number of different, um. Medical technician fields, uh, or rather. Medical technician jobs. So an example would be like a scrub technician. So that would be a pre-apprenticeship opportunity. That they have the opportunity to access. Um, so that's our next immediate step. Um, and then we're we're making moves in other industries and fields. Um, but I I hesitate to mention them by name because when we say pre-apprenticeship. We're really looking for something that's focused like this, that's actually defined by the state. And that comes from, um, especially a close partnership with, um, NG. When we talk about apprenticeships in Nevada, so that has been, um, one of the things that we've been working on this year. Uh, really figuring out how we can better promote and market apprenticeship opportunities for our students once they graduate from high school. As I alluded to previously, we're really trying to reframe the conversation around apprenticeships as being a form of post-secondary education. You are on the job, but you're also. Receiving not just on the job training, but really truly post-secondary education. So. Um, a couple of our primary partners that we're working with in this space. Um, would be in the building trades, the building and construction trades. So that would look like the, um. I want to make sure I get their name right. Uh, the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. Um, as well as the Northern Nevada Apprenticeship Coordinators Association, which kind of oversees. An umbrella of various apprenticeships in the building construction trade. So that would be things like plumbing and pipe fitting, masonry. Um, general construction, um, things of that area. And then when we talk about the, uh, the Southwest counts, the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. They're more focused on obviously apprenticeships in the carpentry space. When we talk about building out that apprenticeship pipeline. Um, again, we have a number of different partners that we're working on and you can view it as kind of a spectrum. It's not just apprenticeships, but it's really kind of that. Overall umbrella of work-based learning. So, um, another set of our primary partners in this space would be local plumbers and pipe fitters union. Um, the Building and Construction Trades Council. Again, when we talk about apprenticeships. What really comes to mind first and foremost is our building and trades groups locally. Uh, when we talk about building kind of that pre-apprenticeship pipeline, again, renowned health is one of our primary partners. Um, we also have partners in terms of TMCC. And the Office of Science and Innovation Technology, where we ran a manufacturing workforce, uh, dual credit course. And then there's some things that are going on at our schools as well. But all of this is to say that when we talk about apprenticeships. The end goal is to provide our students with opportunities to graduate. High school and take advantage of these opportunities for further post-secondary education. But there's a lot of things that happen before they get to that point in terms of, um, putting members of our business and industry community in front of our students. Providing them with information, making sure that our teachers have them right, the right accurate information that's up to date. So they can mentor our students to be able to enter these pipelines. Um, but really at this point in terms of our department, it's all about, um, continuing to reinforce those relationships with these external groups. And gathering as much information as we can that we can put in front of our students and really integrate them with our CTE programs. Before I move on from here, um. The, uh, this would be some other ways in which our students gain access to apprenticeship information. So. Um, Nepris is an online program that's going to provide our students with the opportunity to interact with, uh, members of the business and industry community online. That is a specific online platform where funding is currently being secured by the Governor's Office of Workforce Innovation. Uh, we also provide our students with information through, um, direct CTE presentations. We also work closely with our career center facilitators and all of our high schools to make sure that they have accurate, up-to-date information. And then one other area I'd like to touch on is we have the Nevada Career Explorer, which is our online. Career Development and Planning Program, um, that we're trying to continually up our usage on. It's a tool. It's available to our students across the entire school district. And we're really trying to make sure that we leverage that tool at the middle school level, um, recognizing that. Oftentimes, students are making career decisions whether they know it or not, um, as early as grades six, seven, and eight. So really trying to use that tool especially. Um, to provide our students with information about work-based learning opportunities, whether. That be internships, pre-apprenticeships, or apprenticeships going back to that, uh, that visual of a spectrum. So with this, I covered a lot of information. Uh, I would open it up to the board if anyone has any questions about apprenticeships or pre-apprenticeships or internships.
Thank you, Mr. Hartzog. Let's see. I'm sorry, I cut you off. Were you going to say more?
No, no, no worries.
Okay. All right, um, questions, feedback, comments? Um, this is incredible work. I mean, I think the 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 preparing, the the job of preparing students for the workplace. Um, it's just going more and more when I speaking for myself, when I first joined the board. Um, I have a higher ed background, so I had this, everybody goes to college, you just go to, I had this mentality. Until I really got to understand more of their other great ways. Um, for us as a K twelve system to prepare, prepare students for what happens after school for life, right? It can be a great career. Went to the military and certainly I still want kids to go to college, but just to know that, um, we're kind of shaping and working with work workforce here. To get our students so that they can be actively involved in the workforce that we have here. It's just, it's awesome. It's awesome work. Something I'm really proud of. So thank you.
Thank you, absolutely. And I'll just let the board know that I'm only halfway through my presentation, but this is a a good place to pause if anyone has any questions on these specific topics.
Okay, awesome. All right. So I do see a couple of hands. I want to know if people, people would like to wait or you want to jump in now? Vice President Cottle?
I think I'll wait till the end.
Okay. All right. Well, then this keep, this keep it going.
All right, we'll keep the train moving here. So, um, with that, I'd like to walk you through just a couple of examples of exciting things that are happening with our, our CTE programs in particular. In the space of workforce development and career preparation. So. Two schools I'd like to highlight, whether it's time together tonight. Um, the first one would be North Valleys High School. Uh, this is the first year that North Valleys High School has offered a relatively new pathway that's available via the Department of Education. And that is cybersecurity. We currently have cybersecurity programs operating now at three of our twelve comprehensive high schools. So. Uh, in addition to North Valleys, we have a program out at Spanish Springs, which has been operating for the past couple of years. And then we also have another new program at Worcester as well. And all three of these programs have been started, um, via seed money, which was especially important to us. That came to us, um, by way of the office, the Governor's Office of Science, Innovation, and Technology. Um, their department gave us a startup grant to be able to purchase supplies and equipment, uh, as well as, um, procure training for our educators. And when we talk about training, it's especially important to note that in North Valleys High School, they are really looking to upscale their capacity to be able to offer students opportunities in the field of cybersecurity. Um, they have an instructor out there who is extremely fired up about, uh, receiving his. Uh, official designation as a Cisco Networking Certified Instructor, which is. Required a lot of time and dedication on his part. His name is Frankie Clark. Um, and with him, uh, acquiring this extra training and through his partnership with Cisco. Um, he has been able to secure for North Valleys official design, designatory status. Cisco Networking Academy. Um, we may have heard about Cisco, um, in our typical lives, just as a a primary mover in terms of the technology space. But ultimately Cisco is an American-based multinational corporation. And really the world leader in terms of networking technology and again cybersecurity, cyber defense. So. Um, this designation allows North Valleys, uh, High School the opportunity. To be able to offer over eighty different industry-based certifications to their students free of charge. Um, so when we talk about providing students with opportunities to be able to, uh, engage in one of the highest skill. Highest growth, um, industry fields, not just in our region, but in the world. North Valleys High School is very much on that path to providing students with opportunity. And as you can see, this is a picture of their lab at their school, um, working on computers. Um, and also they they work on, um. Hardware associated with maintaining a network. In terms of their next steps for North Valleys, um, they are continually working on expanding their cybersecurity. So next year is going to be year two. Um, and with that, they're looking to increase the amount of certifications that they can provide their students. So examples of these certifications, their names are things like Intro to Cybersecurity, Packet Tracing, IT Essentials. Cyber Ops Associate, Cisco Certified Network Associate Level One. Um, those are just some examples. And then their ultimate goal is to really develop a workforce pipeline locally with Cisco. And other of our local and regional firms that are in need of talent and networking, IT support and cybersecurity. One of the great things about, um, the partnership with Cisco is that they provide actual mentoring from their staff. Um, to the students so that when they're moving through the program and when they're graduating, they're actually actively being provided. Um, an opportunity to to get into the workforce. North Valleys High School is also starting, um, a group called the Cyber Panthers, which is basically a student managed support team, which will allow students. To be able to serve general IT needs of the school, which is a a critical piece of the educational infrastructure out at North Valleys. And then the long-term goal with this program is that with them having this designation. As a Cisco Networking Academy, they will not only be able to offer, um, coursework and credentials to students in-house. But they'll actually get to a point where they can open up to the rest of the community and provide training. And provide capacity to members of the public. So that would look like first and foremost. Um, ideally members of our own IT department in the district. But then also members of the general public, if it's possible to get into, for example, an after-school format. They can offer courses at cost. Um, and it's extremely, it's an extremely valuable, um, opportunity that they would be able to provide. And then in terms of at Galena High School, um, I'm excited to announce that we are in the process of working with Galena and several of our partners. To convert three of their CTE programs next year to what are called simulated workplaces or operating on the simulated workplace model. So. Those CTE programs are specifically construction technology, their engineering program, and then their metalworking programs. And then the idea is pretty self-explanatory. The idea is to transform these courses from programs into basically simulated workplace. Environments so that you have a student, um, transitioning from the role of a typical student in a school. To really being a staff member of what is called a student-led company. And that looks like the students, um, transform their programs into a business that has its own name. It has its own logo. They develop their own business plan with goals. There's a number of other things. Um, as I alluded to, in this type of format, students take on staff roles with professional responsibilities. And they run their companies within the guide rails of their curriculum standards. So this isn't really a curriculum per se, so much as a a pretty significant culture shift. This model is highly adaptable by program and teacher. Um, ideally with this model, you're moving the teacher out of the lead role and moving them more into a facilitator role while students take on more responsibility. But the strength of the program is that because it's a culture shift, it's really adaptable based on the needs of the students and the teachers. And this is really developed, um. This has been in process with our department for about the last year or so. And this came our way via a strategic corporate partnership with Intuit. Um, which is one of our most important corporate partners. I cannot say enough wonderful things about Intuit, both locally and at the national level. Um, as well as their ability to connect us with the West Virginia Department of Education. Which is really a leader in terms of the simulated workplace model. All of their CTE programs in West Virginia are run on this model. Um, and the more we learn about it, the more excited we get. So ultimately with this vision, uh, the vision of this model, as I said, it's really about creating a culture that presents curriculum in a directly relevant and purposeful manner. It's all about integrating the technical skills with kind of those day one ready workplace skills, so that by the time students. Get to their first time on the job and really a career type environment. They've had that lasting experience of already being in the workplace because they've gone through their CTE program in this model. And in a lot of respects, it's really nothing new to them. It's all about empowering all students with the development of a mindset focused on entrepreneurialism, problem solving, and critical thinking. And one of the primary strengths of this program is that it allows us to provide our students with work-based learning every day. Um, ergo, like an internship within a classroom within a supportive environment of a school. So. Examples of what this would look like in action would be. Students working with teachers to plan instruction and strategize, problem solve together. Student staff taking a lead responsibility for program safety, training, inspections, and reviews. One of the critical components of this model is that, uh, members of the business community actually come into classrooms and come into programs. And provide specific feedback. They provide program evaluations. And those evaluations are conducted by and large between the students and members of the business community. It also looks like students partnering with local business and industries and speaking that common language of business. And developing a practical network so that in many respects, our students become known to local business and businesses and industries. Um, not just the students within a program, but really leading staff within a company of their own design. Um, another example looks like students earning homegrown certifications directly verified by local business and industry. Students generating revenue. So one of the primary components of this is that students are converting a lot of the projects which they would typically be working on. Into monetizable goods and services. Such that they're generating revenue that can flow back into their businesses, into their companies, into their schools. And can be used as they best see fit in line with their business plans. And then for me, especially one of the primary strengths of this is that it provides our students. With the opportunity, especially those students from underrepresented backgrounds, to be able to plan, organize, manage, and lead. Um, plan, manage, organize, and lead within their programs, but also their peers as well, so that we're directly providing leadership opportunities. So in this particular, uh, school and project next year, our next steps are to support year one rollout at Galena High School. Um, we want to share this model with the rest of our CTE educators district wide, so that would look like our teachers, our counselors, administrators. We've had kind of a soft rollout up to this point, sharing it with a few people, sharing it with our department leaders. Um, we're also creating a team of stakeholders to explore feasibility of this model for A C T and Debbie Smith as our two. Primary career tech academies coming online. And then when travel restrictions allow, we also want to take a team of observers out to West Virginia to be able to observe these programs in action. Um, and then we want to continue to be able to partner with Intuit in the strategic collaboration. As again, there's no way we really would have been able to come as far as we have in terms of planning this out without their continued support and, uh. Connective capacity in terms of working with West Virginia. So with that, that was a lot of information, um, and I will be here for questions.
All right. Thank you so much. I see a couple of hands back up now. We'll go with, uh, trustee big pen, and I think Vice President Cottle is already in the queue. And then I see. Our clerk Manette, we're going that order.
Madam President, Josh, thank you to you and your team for all the hard work you're you're doing on this. I'm very grateful to, um. To have met with your team early on, uh, after coming into office and. Since then, I've been have the opportunity to visit many of our schools that have, um, CTE programs. I'm just amazed and blown away every time. At all of the really cool things that are available to our students that are going to help them. Career-wise. So I think that really perfectly aligns with, uh, Washoe County School District's mission of being, uh, college and career ready. Um, so I I really am very appreciative. I'm looking forward to seeing this, uh, continue to grow and expand, um, for all of our students. So, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
Okay, let's go. Who we have next? Uh, Vice President Cottle, clerk Manette. Okay, let's go. Who do we have next? A Vice President Cottle, Clerk Manero and then Dr. Nicolette.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Josh, for the presentation. It's, uh, this is really good work and. I know I requested this a while back because I thought it was really good for us to get an update on, on where we are. I think about the work that's being done around Portrait of a Graduate. When, when we look at this work, I do think. That as a, as a society, we have really over the past thirty, forty years have an imbalance between. Going to college and not going to college. And when I was in school, it was almost looked down upon if you weren't going to a four-year university and. And I like the, the direction that we're, we're heading to really have two tracks, that you're going to a four-year university. And you're going into career and ensuring that we're preparing students. For the track that they've chosen to, to go down. And so I, I really do think this is, this is good work. I think we have to just keep. Pushing forward. I, I think for us as, as a board, we have to make it a priority to ensure that these. Opportunities are avail, available to. All students in our district regardless of which vertical they're in and which zip code they, they live in. And I do think that this is kind of the future of education, that this hands-on approach, preparation for. For the next step and that, that will be a part of, of the classroom, the classroom work. And I'm really appreciative of the district for the work that's being done at North Valley's High School. I had the opportunity to get a tour of the, the program. And to see all that's happened in such a short period of time and. For the teacher, he showed me a computer that a student built and I could hold it in the palm of my hand. And the opportunities are being given to our students to have great careers for themselves. But also to give back to our, to our society. I think that's as a unit, as a district, our priority should be how are we preparing our students to be. Positive contributors to our, to our economy and that is college and career-ready. We talk about AP classes. AP is to prepare for college. This is, this is AP. For students in career. And so the more that we can do in this area, I'm definitely all for it. So. I'm appreciative. We just have to make sure we keep moving forward and continue to open up more opportunities. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Vice President Cottle. We'll, we'll go on. I believe Clerk Manero was next, then Dr. Nicolette. Now we're here for my student trustee, Victoria.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I just think this is fabulous. My son went through when, you know, he was pushed to go through college, which he did, and then he had a really hard time finding a job because there was a huge. Flood in the system at that time. This is fabulous. I just, I have probably really obscure questions. And so. Are the kids able to step right into a job? You know, in, I suppose it depends on what they're studying. Is that correct, Josh?
Correct. Yeah, it, it really kind of depends on what are their, what are their goals for once they leave high school. And, and it's interesting you should ask, one of the, the primary. When we talk about data collection, one of the primary data points that we're looking to collect from our students moving forward is. What are their, what are their plans post-secondary? Between now and the end of the year. We're actually looking to administer a survey to all of our students in CTE programs. To really dig into what are their goals once they leave high school. If they already have career decisions made, who is most influential to them in terms of providing that mentorship, mentorship? And that model for what they want to do after high school. So I think the, the first question is really what, what are their plans after school? I can say that a lot of our students, especially when we look at a model like North Valley's High School where they have such a. A really workforce-forward program in terms of cybersecurity and where they're going with Cisco Networking. The goal at North Valley's is really to make those students as ready as possible to get into entry-level positions in terms of. IT networking and support and cybersecurity and things like that. So for, for programs that are like a North Valley's. Our goal is to provide our students with the skills that they need to be ready to get into entry-level jobs. There certainly some of our other programs such as like sports medicine. Or computer science, for example, and, and even not computer science so much, but some of our programs do lend themselves to. Being on a track that's more post-secondary training, more education such that they can enter after receiving a few more years of. Of training or education. So ultimately, it all depends. I can say that when it comes to a program like Galena where we're, we're shifting to more of a, a workplace, a simulated workplace model. That's absolutely the goal. They might not have all of the technical skills that they need to be ready to enter the workforce. But what we really want to be sure to do is to strengthen their, their general workplace readiness skills so that by the time they leave high school. Again, they might not know all that they need to know to enter a specific field, but they're going to be comfortable in a work environment. They're going to have the. Experience of having gone through at least two or three or four job interviews within their own programs. They're going to know what it is to organize resources. They're going to know what it is to prevent themselves professionally and show up on time. And to especially significantly, they're going to know hopefully what it is to manage projects and what it is to manage and lead. Other people in a work environment. So in terms of those soft skills, as they're so often called, that's absolutely the goal with a simulated workplace model.
Thank you. I would, I would be interested in knowing what you find out from your surveys. I just would be interested in that.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll be happy to share it with the board before, between, we're looking to administer that in May. So the, the whole month of May is going to be that window. And then moving forward, we're looking to integrate it with our programs in the fall. So as soon as students enter our programs, we can collect a lot of data, but absolutely, we'll share that with the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Manero, Dr. Nicolette, and then we'll go to our student trustee, Victoria, and then to trustee Calvert and then trustee Church.
Hello, Josh. Nice to see you. Thank you for your presentation. This certainly has been an evolution. As you know, I've been involved in career and tech ed for a very long time. When it goes all the way back to VICA and the JOT, JOTC. The Joint Occupational Council that Washoe had. And so, so many partnerships have been cultivated over the years and I. I've been proud to, to be a part of that. I have, I have a lot of questions and so. I, I want to concentrate on a couple nuances as far as the certifications and portability. I'll just kind of throw a couple of questions out at you, Josh, if you can maybe just jot them down and then I, I will mute myself. Portable certifications, although I personally would like our, our graduates to stay in Washoe County. My question is, will certifications be portable so that they can take them anywhere? You know, lots of times students, they don't, they don't want to stick around. They may want to come back, but they want to go away for a while and, and do their thing. I also want to know, is there an intent, not an intent, is there a, I guess, maybe a hope that. This shift will increase our numbers in our CTE programs. Also related then to increased graduation. That's kind of at a, a lower level question. And then I do wonder about the strategies that were incorporated with current. Community partners that we've developed for so many years in identifying how to make this happen for our students. And, and last but not least, the skilled trades, welding, machining, automotive, culinary. We didn't hear anything about those existing programs. Do you see that there's going to be a shift? From the, the, the three-year to the two-year study in, in those particular skilled trades? Thank you.
Let me take, uh, let me go in reverse and I'll, I'll have to have you walk me through the questions to make sure I'm answering correctly. So. So to, to walk the, the board back a step, so Nevada Department of Education is converting our programs from three-year core programs. So meaning they, they need to take three years to complete the pathway down to two-year cores. With the option to extend their studies around a variety of other, they call them complementary courses. So the intent of the Nevada Department of Education is to. Provide more opportunities so students can complete their programs in a shorter amount of time. And then if they want to extend their studies, they can do it as schools decide to kind of choose courses from more of a menu. So. If I'm hearing correctly, do I feel that. Students in those especially skilled in technical sciences, as well as like culinary, which would be. Education, hospitality and human services. Do I feel like those programs, students in those programs will be able to acquire the skills that they need? Given that they'll be going down to two-year cores. So I think it ultimately comes down to the standards writing process. And how well we can make sure that our teachers are engaged with the rest of the state in terms of building out standards. That encompass the, the breadth of what they need to know and what is most critical. So do I think it's possible? I think it's possible because a lot of CTE programs across the nation are run on two-year programs. So. I, I know that it's simply being done. In terms of it ultimately coming to fruition, I think it's a matter of making sure that our, our teachers are at the table. And that they're able to put together the standards that adequately address what is most critical. So I have faith in the process. In terms of being able to provide students with opportunities to extend their studies. That's going to look like a prolonged coordinated effort between my department. And our schools in terms of building out programs of study that provides students to be the opportunity to be able to enrich. Their experience once they get done with their two-year cores. In that effort, we're starting with our signature programs. So we have our signature CTE programs across the district, which we want to maintain as much as possible as four-year programs. We've already started having conversations with schools about what those programs of study can look like. I think there's enough options being offered by the state that we can continue to maintain those four-year comprehensive programs of study. So that's the first step. But then going back to your original question of, do I ultimately think that there's enough time in these two-year programs? I, I have to. I, I'm, I'm an optimist, but I also know that ultimately that process is, is driven by our teachers, which we will be sure to make sure that they're. Core in that process. And that's going to be a protracted effort. That's, you know, that's like a three-to-five-year timeline of getting all of those standards. Revised. So that'll be a lot of hard work. I'll go back to the next question that I remember offhand. When it comes to credentials and certifications that are portable. When we look at credentials and certifications, those are on a list that is maintained by the Governor's Office of Workforce Innovation. And offhand, I believe all of those credentials to be able to be on that list, they have to be portable. I'm trying to think of examples of credentials that are. Regional or community-specific and I can't think of any offhand. I could absolutely be wrong. But when we are looking at continually expanding credentials and certifications amongst our programs. That's one of our guide stars is that we want to make sure that they're not so specific that they only work for our kids in Washoe County. A great example would be Cisco Networking credentials. Those are nationally, internationally recognized. So that's an opportunity that we want to continue to build up and expand. Another credentialing area that we're looking at is the area of manufacturing. So there's a number of different certifications that we are considering to be able to offer our students. And one of the primary, you know, guide rails that we're looking to be within is if we do give our students the opportunity to obtain a certification. How portable is it? How nationally recognized is it? So. That's, that's what we're looking at. There's, there's going to be a few that might be regionally specific, but ultimately we want to make sure that our kids have. Stackable, portable credentials. And then I, I'm forgetting a few others, the questions.
You did great. Okay, so basically it was about graduation rates and do we anticipate our fingers crossed for. Increasing our enrollment in CTE programs. I, I can include a yes, signature programs too. And ultimately. Helping students find a pathway so that they graduate and, and move on to the, the rest of their life. The second one was. What kind of involvement have we had from our business partners in helping think about this?
So in terms of how our graduation rate is for our students that are completing CTE programs currently. It's pretty high. It's in the, it's in the nineties percentiles in terms of. Students completing CTE programs, which makes sense because if you're a student in the situation that. You have that persistent ability to be able to maintain the GPA requirements, to be able to pass those exams. It would logically follow that you're most likely going to be able to graduate from high school as well. So historically, our graduation rates are very, very strong. In terms of increasing access and opportunity to get into our CTE programs. Next year is really going to be a rebuilding year. We've had about ten percent of our students have to opt out for various reasons from our programs. Which are, you know, are, are shifts that we're seeing across the nation and, and all of education. So that's not unexpected. But looking to next year, one of our primary goals is to really dig into. Which of our schools are high-growth? They have high potential in terms of growing their CTE programs. And then how can we make sure that we connect? Create lasting sustained connections between those high school programs and their middle school feeders. We really, really want to work to grow our connections and our relationships between our middle schools and our high schools and. And we know that for many of our high schools and our middle schools, they're doing that fantastic work already. We just want to make sure that we're providing very layered, specific support where there's opportunity for those connections to grow. And those marketing, especially those marketing opportunities to be able to put our CTE programs in front of our kids. With that, one, a, a very in-the-weeds example is we're working on. I hesitate to call it career trees, but basically it's a poster that shows our CTE programs within a given broad career field. And then showing examples of our CTE programs and the jobs that our students can find. By, by way of studying a particular CTE program. And it's a poster, it's bright, it's colorful, it's got our CTE logo on it. And we're looking to produce those posters and ship them out to as many middle schools as possible. So the idea is that if you're a middle school student, you're sitting in class. And you see that CTE logo, you see that brand, but also you see the very specific career planning information that you need when you're in those lower grades. So that it's always in front of you so that, you know, by the time you hit eighth grade, CTE is not an alien term to you. You've been exposed to it starting as early as sixth grade, if not beforehand. So. That's just a, a really in-the-weeds example of how we're looking to, to build recruitment into our programs and, and build really the, the brand of CTE. You had one question and I, I, you had one more question. I left it hanging. I forgot what that.
That's okay, man. You have really on-boarded this information. I am so proud of you. For anybody who, who cares, Josh and I have known each other quite a while and I, and I'm so proud of you. Anyway. It goes back to our business partners who know ultimately makes so many things happen.
Yeah, so I, I'm happy to report that we've made some pretty significant strides in terms of maintaining ties with our business and industry community. I feel as, like a success story for us this year especially has been building some deeper connections with. Labor groups in the building and construction trades, plumbers and pipe fitters union, Northern Nevada. Apprenticeship Coordinators Association, Construction Craft Laborers, those groups, those representative groups. We also meet on a bi-weekly basis with EDON so that we can exchange information about labor market needs. EDON graciously is one of our partners, has gotten us access to what's called the MC System, which is EMSI. That's a subscription service which they secured grant funding for us. To be able to access detailed labor market information. So that's, that's like what are the top. Business firms across our community in terms of job posting information. They can give, they can produce reports about what are the typical skills they're looking for in terms of, you know, applicants. A whole bunch of very detailed labor market information that is not publicly accessible. So. Through that business and industry partnership, we're looking to be able to leverage that tool. To be able to send our counselors, our teachers, our families, our career center facilitators. Regular workforce development bulletins that provide. Granular information about this is the economic need across our community and these are the opportunities that our kids can access once they leave. High school. So that tool, that resource really came about only through our sustained partnership and discussions that we're engaging in with EDON. And then there's a number of other, you know, business and industry partners that I, I will leave people out and I, I hesitate to do so, but. I feel like we're in a very good place in terms of our connections and keeping our ear to the ground with the business and industry community. And I fully anticipate that's only going to continue to grow. And with that, I do have to name-check them. Intuit, Intuit Inc. Phenomenal corporate partner. I need to get back to the board and present just on the things that Intuit is doing with us. As a business and industry partner because they're just amazing in terms of their, their sustained mentorship and partnership for our district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very, thank you, Dr. Nicolette. And thank you. That was really comprehensive. Josh, I appreciate that.
Student trustee, uh, Victoria, and then trustee Calvert and trustee Church.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I think this is a great, um, thing that you guys are doing in the district. This seems like great opportunities for students. I definitely would, um, if I wasn't, I would say I would definitely be really interested in any of these. I know I did, um, look into the internship program. Um, when it comes to looking at these internships and these pre-apprenticeships and apprenticeships, do we see like a specific amount of students coming from one specific school? More than like other different schools?
That's a really great question. So, um, I don't have that information offhand. I do know that that's one of the primary data points that we're looking to continuously review. Um, as a department, we're actually meeting this Friday to go over our quarterly data. And one of the primary data points that we're looking to um, review is our internship data. So how many of our students engaged in internships in semester one and semester two of this year, um, looking at demographic information? But in terms of school information, I think that that data is pretty easy to um, come by. But that's a really good question in terms of, you know, which are our schools are stronger in terms of their internship recruitment and which of our schools have higher growth potential? Um, I can find that information and, and provide it back to the board. Um, offhand, I can't really, I, I can't think of any school that's stronger in terms of the internship recruitment space than any other. But I, I, I can't speak to that with any specificity.
Alright, thank you. I just had that question because I know, um, I specifically had never heard about any of the, what you just stated right now. Um, apart from those internship, internships. So I was wondering like what schools do to show their students what that is. And I know you said like their career, um, their career groups in, at their schools. And like the college fairs and stuff like that are the ones that share this out, but I've never heard of it. So I wanna see like what's, what can we do more for schools that um, in order to bring this information out to students?
So, and that's a great question. So in terms of pre-apprenticeships and apprenticeships, we are, um, right now, we're kind of planning a strong promotional rollout for fall of next year. So really, we're talking about expanding our capacity to be able to market and promote those opportunities. Um, always looking for ways to um, uh, expand information around our internships especially. So an example of one of the things that we did around internships this year was, um, our renowned, uh, medical internship. Tremendous opportunity for our students and uh, we really wanted to make sure that we were providing that opportunity directly to our students, especially in our medical programs. So we have sports medicine programs, we have biomedical program, we have a E M T program. Um, so one of the things that we did was we created flyers for the renowned health internship. And then we mailed them home to every single one of those eligible students in those medical programs. And we saw a phenomenal uptick in terms of interest in taking advantage of that opportunity. So we're looking for ways to be creative. There's um, community-wide ways that we disperse information, but then also um, just finding even kind of, you know, old school snail mail, put a flyer in the mail, um, and send it directly to our students. Um, so that we're, we're finding ways to be more targeted to students that might um, be interested in these opportunities. So it's, it's definitely a growth process.
Thank you, Mr. Hertzog.
Thank you.
Thank you, student trustee Victoria, trustee Calvert, and then trustee Church.
Well, thank you very much, uh, for your presentation. And I just had a couple of questions. Some of you have kind of answered, but just a little bit of clarity from me, please. Um, so at what grade level do you start introducing these programs?
Um, so in terms of our signature programs, um, we provide uh, information to all of our middle school counselors. Um, we were always looking for ways to provide more accurate, more compelling information to our middle school counselors. This year in the fall, I would say around October, we made sure that we met with all the middle school counselors. Um, we created a new PowerPoint presentation to give to our counselors. So that was kind of plug and play. As they're meeting with their kids, as they're talking about signature programs, they can just show them the PowerPoint with photos of our programs and things like that. So that would be one of the primary ways that we're looking to communicate with our students. Um, one of the old ways that we used to do was the career expo, which we haven't been able to do this year with COVID. And then there's, um, there's funding concerns with that event moving forward. Um, in terms of internship opportunities, um, we send out a district-wide connected for that. And then like I also alluded to, we're sending out those flyers for kind of those more targeted um, opportunities. And then moving forward, what we're looking to do is dig into the data of our schools where there is potential for growth between middle and high school. And where we see potential for growth, it's a matter of moving out to those middle schools, especially in providing support to get information into those middle schools. And then district-wide, it's about brand building. Like I said, with the career trees, um, the posters, that's one of the things that we're looking to do. Um, is just do whatever we can to provide materials out into the middle schools. Um, so again, that there's a, an awareness of, a general awareness of CTE. Um, and then something that I'm missing is passport nights. So that is something that we've been able to maintain. This year we were, so in a typical year, we um, go to either community sites or pre-COVID in fall of twenty nineteen, we went to middle schools to the gyms. And we hosted informational um, nights at each one of those middle schools over the course of four nights. Um, and the primary audience there is our eighth grade families to provide them with information about our signature programs. Moving forward, and this year in COVID, we were able to host that um, virtually. So I think we had about three hundred families take advantage of those um, informational sessions um, virtually. So there's a number of things that we do. Um, moving forward, uh, as restrictions allow, we want to reinstitute those passport nights especially. And then we've had feedback um, from various community groups about broadening our audience so that we're not just inviting eighth grade families, but we're inviting seventh grade families as well. Because a lot of these decisions are being made. You know, early on, earlier than eighth grade, by the time you get to the fall of your eighth grade year, you're all, you're already in many ways committed to a path in high school. So um, broadening that audience so that again, we're inviting families younger than eighth grade. Um, we're hoping is gonna provide us some traction as well in terms of expanding awareness.
And one more question that I had was, um, how do you prepare them like for dress to, um, resumes, to how to interact with their coworkers? Are, are those things that, um, you address as well within these programs? And that's my last question.
That's a great question. So, um, the Nevada Department of Education has a separate set of standards. They're called the, um, the assessment is called the workplace readiness assessment, workplace readiness skills assessment. And then I think currently they're still known as the employability skills, but ultimately in each one of our CTE programs, they have a standardized set of standards, curriculum standards across all of those programs that touch on basic employability, workplace readiness skills. So things like presenting yourself professionally, understanding how to operate within the context of a team, understanding how to collaborate. And those are standards that our teachers are expected to hit on throughout the year. Um, one of the, again, the strengths of going to a simulated workplace model at Galena is really providing our teachers, um, you know, an anchor so that students are practicing those skills every single day they enter the classroom. So in West Virginia and some of their programs, it looks like literally the students clock in and out. Literally the students have like a special polo that they wear every time they enter into their program. Um, the students are working on projects as staff teams. So example, you would have a project manager, a student acting as a project manager. You'd have a student acting as a team leader. You'd have a student acting as a support specialist. They literally have a job description. They have to interview to get into their job, um, within their program. And then they are operating within the confines of that job description in anywhere from a month to a quarter, and then they rotate job descriptions. So going back to that concept, all those things that you're alluding to, really they're baked in every single day. So that when a student's entering the classroom, they're not entering a classroom. They're entering a work environment. So that's one of the highest potentials that we see moving forward. Um, but there are definitely, um, there's a curriculum piece currently. And students are tested on that once they leave. When they complete their CTE program, they take that workplace readiness skills assessment. Um, and for the most part, um, achievement's pretty high. We get, we get pretty strong performance on that assessment. But ultimately, we're always looking for ways to do better, to integrate those soft skills that are so important um, with the technical skills that our students are learning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Calvert. And just before we go to trustee Church, um, Josh, will you just unchair your screen? Then we can just get back to to Galen since we're done with the presentation, part of this anyway, and then we'll go to, uh, trustee Church.
Great, thank you very much. Yes, Josh, I'm amazed at the incredible depth of knowledge you have. Thank you. Uh, two and a half questions. From my era, junior achievement, how does that play into it? And related to that, that's the other half. Um, the Galena simulated program. Am I cor- correct? There's no commuting. If you don't go to Galena, you don't go there. And also did, was there any discussion like junior achievement where they would actually produce a product versus simulated? And then the final question would be, if you could discuss a little bit on the funding for CTE, what the um, community partners contribute versus the school district? Thanks.
Thank you. Um, so in terms of junior achievement, I probably know more than I'm letting on to, but I, I can't speak to that with any level of expertise. Um, if you give me a little more information, uh, I might be able to tease out an answer for you, but um, I'm not familiar with the, the program. Although I probably should be.
The, back in the day, they used.
I can actually, when, when the time is right, I'll actually jump in and help you out with that one.
Um, I'll, I'll skip to the, the Galena question. So currently, um, because it's a pilot, that program is uh, available to students that are in that school. For uh, engineering, so we are converting their engineering program to a simulated workplace model. Um, that is a part of their signature programs, which means that um, students have the ability to get into that program on a variance. Um, but currently the only schools that have transportation available to them as part of our signature academy framework are AACT and Worcester. So unfortunately, no, we don't unless a student is on a variance to Galena and they can provide their own transportation. That opportunity is not open to them, um, at this time. Our hope is that as we present this information to more of our CTE staff, um, interest will be such that we can expand these opportunities to more schools and thus ultimately to more students. Um, but we're, we're currently still in, um, the nascent stage of, of getting that, that model established. Um, going back to your question.
Can I ask a quick question on that line?
Yes.
Any discussion among staff if, um, the kids have their own transportation, the parents would transport them? Where they would be allowed to. And is this the way it is district-wide for all the other programs? Thank you.
Currently, uh, so we have what are called signature programs, which are basically for the most part, we have CTE programs at every single one of our high schools. And then within each of our high schools, um, several, not all, but several of our CTE programs are clustered together into themes. Um, so an example would be, uh, at Galena, their theme or their signature academy is the, the STEM academy, which is focused on engineering. Um, another example would be at Reed High School, they have the enterprise project, which is focused on um, skilled and technical sciences as well as human services. Um, at Spanish Springs, their signature academy is focused on uh, sports medicine and media communication. So all of these schools have these signature programs. And the primary benefit to kids is that it gives them the opportunity to apply and be accepted to those schools on a variance if they live out of zone. The constraint given our resources is that, um, the only signature programs that currently have transportation on, on, on school buses is AACT and Worcester. Um, but that being said, if you're able to get in and you're able to provide your own transportation, you have that variance opportunity to be able to um, attend a school outside of your zone. Does that, does that answer what you're looking for? Um, and then in terms of funding, so we have a variety of other funding, um, sources that we're able to, to um, leverage. So are, in terms of the lifeblood of our CTE programs, it primarily looks like federal and state funding, um, which is administered through the Department of Education's um, CTE arm. So on any given year, in terms of our state grant, that looks like anywhere from eight hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars. And that provides us with um, monetary resources to provide direct support to our programs. And then we have federal funding, which again, total ballpark averages is anywhere from about five to seven hundred thousand dollars, which we primarily leverage to um, be able to maintain support staff within my um, department, which then provides administrative and support um, to our various programs. So aside from those two lifeblood sources, there's a number of other um, grants and then also gifts that we are able to benefit from. So an example would be, um, um, like the OSIT grant. So that was a government grant, which came from the governor's office of science and innovation technology. That was seed money, which we were able to use to support startup cybersecurity programs. Um, we also uh, benefit from gifts and donations from various department, gifts and donations from various community partners. An example would be Intuit, which provided us with a fifty thousand dollar gift to be able to bridge um, digital equity gaps across our community. Um, so I hesitate to name too many others in detail, but ultimately we're always on the lookout for, um, you know, external sources of support and business and industry community partners that can provide us with support. Um, and we, we do benefit from, by and large, a lot of that, that goodwill amongst our community.
So President.
Dr. McNeil, yes, please.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and answer the question on, on junior achievement. So actually junior achievement's a longstanding partners of ours, trustee Church. Um, I used to sit on the board, uh, chief, um, Neil Rimbardo used to sit on the board, and then we switched it over to, to the grants department. Um, but a longstanding relationship. Dr. Parks sits on their board now, I believe. Yes, okay. But they provide a lot of lessons around fiscal stewardship and financial responsibility, starting all the way in first grade. Um, and we're always looking for volunteers to teach those lessons. I used to teach the third grade lesson. Um, but obviously due to COVID, right, we're not allowed to have the volunteers in the classroom. So they've been doing a lot of virtual lessons. Um, and so hopefully, once we're at that point in time, uh, where we're going to be able to have volunteers back in the classroom, we'll be able to have our JA um, volunteers back in the classroom. But it's a wonderful partnership and a longstanding relationship.
Okay, I think. And if I might add, uh.
Please, Dr. Parks, please.
As well, sorry, sorry, Madam President. Yeah, in serving on the JA board this year, uh, we are working with them on a virtual event coming up here in May. Uh, all of our students in high school will have access to the virtual event. And it's called, uh, JA Inspire. And as Dr. McNeil mentioned, uh, they're gonna focus on, uh, post uh, high school opportunities and really provide uh, updates and mentoring. And they have some really big-name uh, speakers that are gonna be attending and they're, they're doing it for free for our students.
Nice, we like free. Alright, thank you. Thank you for adding that, both of you, Dr. McNeil and Dr. Parks. Uh, trustee Calvert, I believe that was it's, unless your hand is still up, because you have another question. Um, but in the, in just to clarify that, in the meantime, we'll go to Vice President Calvo.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, trustee Church says something that, um, sparked a question. In these programs, if the students are creating a product that can be used such as rebuilding a computer or something, is, are there avenues for these programs to either use it as a community service for the residents of that school community or individual community? Or is it something that can be used to uh, make a profit for the program to essentially sustain itself? Are there opportunities there for these programs that actually produce products that can be used in the community?
Um, short answer is absolutely. Um, so the ideally, we wanna get to the place where we're having it both ways, where we're providing a community service and we're providing a, a means of generating a, a level of revenue and self-sufficiency back to our program. So an example would be one of the programs in West Virginia, they have a construction, basically a construction-oriented program. Um, an example that we learned about is that they, at one of their high schools, they um, established a collaboration with their local Department of Parks and Recreation, so that students in the construction program were able to get on buses, be transported to, um, their local parks and be able to work on rewiring their electrical signs, um, at their local, uh, their public restrooms. And also get a contract to be able to produce, um, animal shelters in the parks. I don't know what an animal shelter is per se. I don't, I, the conversation moved so rapidly, but ultimately, it was about a program being able to create a, a a working agreement with a local government entity so that students were providing monetizable services and products that benefited the community. And then ultimately went back into the program. So when we talk about the, you know, the highest functioning um, way of, of, of proceeding with this program, that would absolutely be something. So when we talk about the, you know, the highest functioning way of proceeding with this program, that would absolutely be something that we're looking for is the ability to provide services, to provide products that are a benefit to the community and that come back to benefit the school, definitely.
Yeah, that'd be something I think we would all be really interested in, especially with funding issues. And if programs can do something for the community that can create funding to sustain itself and grow itself. I'm sure we would all be interested in it. Obviously, there's logistics with that and getting something like that done. But no, I appreciate that, I'm glad we're looking into that.
Definitely.
I'll just jump in there, if that's okay, President Taylor, to help out with that as well, too. And obviously, we're always, you know, I know we have a high school out there that is interested in doing this with mechanics and cars and those types of things. And obviously, there's a lot of legal issues that we have to deal with as well, too. So but always looking at different opportunities for that, too.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other feedback questions from Mr. Hartzell? Very, very good information, great questions from my colleagues. I think we're all pretty, you know, pretty impressed and excited about what we're able to see and do with CTE. I mean, the workplace development piece is so exciting and it's so what? I think, I think it's something that I'm glad we have more and more partnerships that's allowing us to do that. I'm specifically interested in that Intuit, that's good that they're so involved and have been so helpful and this has to go along.
Yeah, and President Taylor, I just want to add, if that's all right, just real quick, you know, Josh and his team and our CTE teachers deserve so much recognition. They do not take, this is not workforce development light. They are always, you know, ahead of the national trends, you know, and Washoe County is a leader in career and technical education. And so getting the word out more and more about all of our programs is so important. And I know when Ms. Batchelder sent you all the answers to the questions that you all sent us, that's a great, you know, way that you all can go out when you're out in the public. Josh was very detailed in giving you high school by high school, some really neat points that are able to share out in the public. Because I just, you know, we should all, you know, as trustee, Vice President Cottle said, we should all be so proud of all of this work. And, you know, Josh and his team have worked really hard also on the application process to open that up to many, many of our students, our English language learners, special education. They work very closely with those departments to make sure that there's no barriers and that every child has the opportunity to get into our career and technical program. So again, just kudos to you, Josh, and our teachers and great job.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you. And again, I'm going to say this as well, as we look at access, that's just something for us, certainly nothing that we can do right now. But I really appreciate what you just said, Dr. McNeil, that and working really hard so that a lot of students can have access to it. And hopefully, we'll get to that point where transportation is a part of that. But just every other thing that we can do, I know we aren't quite there yet, but everything that we can do to help at least minimize those barriers or make it as accessible as possible is greatly appreciated because a lot of students can really benefit from it. So. All right, I don't know that we have public comment on this. I'm looking in our emails, we haven't received any on this while we've had this conversation. JJ, is there anything that I'm missing?
We have not received public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Again, Josh, thank you so much for your work, you and your team, and for really comprehensive presentation and response to the questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, you do the same. All right, next item on the agenda is our bridge reporting 6.02. 6.02 Washoe County School District Strategic Plan Bridge Year Reporting for Metrics Related to the Following Goals and Possible Action to Provide Direction and Update or Revised Metrics As Needed. This is goal one, to ensure annual student academic growth through a system of curriculum instruction and assessment that is aligned, rigorous, and relevant. I'm really glad we're seeing this now because we're getting a lot of emails about what are we doing for students and helping them grow and all of this and about standing, which is not necessarily how we rate ourselves. But this is a great time to look at that and answer this question. So I'm hopeful that those that are concerned about this are watching to see, here are some things that shows what's being done, what's being done for the growth. And then goal three, to engage families, staffs, trustees, and community members in strong relationships, provide meaningful opportunities to increase their educational expertise and trust, and to share responsibility for student success. And then finally, goal five, to ensure our schools are safe, secure, supportive, and welcoming environments where students and staff are able to succeed academically and professionally at the highest possible level. This is presentation discussion and for possible action. And I'm not sure if you're going, I don't know if you're going to start this superintendent McNeil, I think so. And then we'll turn it over to your team who are down here as presenters.
Well, thank you very much, President Taylor, members of the board, for the record Superintendent Kristen McNeil. So again, today, we are very pleased to present our 1920 board metrics. And as you all know, as the entire board remembers, not only from our board orientations, but also from our strategic work session all the way back on January 29th. We've been presenting metrics and updates to your strategic plan on a regular basis. And the board adopted this method because it was more consistent. And it allowed the board to take the strategic plan and the metrics in easier digestible formats. So today, just as President Taylor was talking about, we're going to be talking about goal one, goal three, and goal five around those metrics. And then again, you have within your packet, the entire pathway, which goes all the way back to July as far as the reporting of these metrics. But it's also important to remember and important for the public to know that these are 1920 metrics and targets. So this is for the previous school year, and these are the metrics and targets that we're reporting on. And if you recall back on December 8th, you all provided the superintendent my evaluation. And that also had components that you'll hear about here, but just not as deep. So back during that, we talked about the graduation rate, which was preliminary at that point in time back in December. And so now today, we're going to go just a smidge more into details around that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to, I believe Deputy Superintendent Byersdorf. We'll have Chief Strategies Officer, Dr. Lamarcas. We will have Dr. Laura Davidson from our accountability team join in the presenting today as well.
Perfect, thank you, Dr. McNeil, and good afternoon trustees. Again, Deborah Byersdorf, Deputy Superintendent. And I think Paul is driving this PowerPoint, so there we go, thanks, Paul. Joining me in the presentation and discussion for goal one is Dr. Laura Davidson, who is our Director of Student Accountability. And so we're going to kind of tag team our way through this. So as Dr. McNeil just discussed, goal one, academic growth is around ensuring student academic growth through a system of curriculum instruction and assessment that is aligned, rigorous, and relevant. And this afternoon, we want to dive deeper into objective two and metric one, which is four-year cohort graduation rates. And providing you information about how we get this data, what we do with it, but also too, what the process is to ensure that our students are on track to a timely graduation. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Davidson right now. She's going to walk us through that dark blue ribbon at the top, and then I'll come back and talk about areas of success and barriers.
Thank you. For the record, Laura Davidson, Director of Research and Evaluation. So for this measure, we look at whether each of our racial, ethnic, and special population groups showed more improvement in their graduation rates than the district overall. So there were eight populations who underperformed the district rate of 86% in 2018-19. That's our denominator for these targets. Then we look at whether those eight groups of students outperform the district's rate of change between 2018-19 and 2019-20. So if 50% of those groups did that, then we meet our target. And if 75% of those groups did that, then we exceed our targets. Paul, if you want to go ahead and move to the next slide, I'll just show which population groups did meet their targets. So for 2019-20, we only had two of those eight groups outperform the district rate of change. Those are highlighted in green. So we didn't meet our overall target for this metric, but we know school closures heavily impacted our students during the spring. As we've seen before, our graduation rate declined overall in 2019-20 from 86% to 85%. I think even that's just an incredible testament to the work of our high schools and district that we nearly maintained our graduation rate in the face of all the challenges the pandemic posed to students during school closures. So two groups highlighted in green showed increases in graduation rates in 2020 and outpaced the district's performance. And that row with Hispanic students is highlighted, even though it shows a 0%, because they actually increased from 81.7% to 82.1%. So a small change that's hard to see with rounding, but it was a positive improvement that we wanted to flag. And the other group that outpaced the district in 2020 was our group of students learning English who increased their graduation rate by two percentage points. So I'll go ahead and turn it back over to Debbie. She's going to talk about some of the amazing efforts our schools undertook in the spring to help our students graduate before we move on to the next metric.
Thank you, Laura. So trustees, I don't, I think you'll see the areas of success and barriers as something familiar that we have shared with you in the past. So I wanted to briefly walk through those. So areas of success, and I want to mention as well that whether it's our leadership team, our principals, all of us working together to really challenge ourselves. What are the areas of success and what are the true barriers? So a lot of thought goes into what we do populate these boxes with. So under areas of success, our high schools, and this has happened prior, this has been in place for a number of years now, but it's definitely seen as an ongoing area of success. Our high schools develop strong systems in collaboration with the Accountability Department and also with our area superintendents who supervise our high schools to put systems in place that closely track and monitor our seniors as they work through their senior year on time to graduation. Data includes attendance, credit accumulation. I'm thinking about the previous presentation from Josh Hartsock. Programs that students are engaged in, and we look at every facet of support, concerns, where our kids are as they move through their senior year. And we have continued that work again this year as well. We also, as you may recall, we have what we fondly term as our SGAs, but our student graduation advocates and our FGAs, our family graduation advocates in our schools. And they are an amazing support. They really know our students, they get to know our students' families very well as well. And they help our schools, our guidance counselors do outreach to our seniors. What are the barriers? What's happening? Does a student, for example, feel that they need to be working instead of going to school? How can we work around those barriers and those challenges? So they are a great resource to our kids and to our schools. And then also what was unique to last school year, because this is about the 2019-20 school year, when we started to receive devices as we were, you know, as our schools were closed, our school sites were closed. We deployed to seniors, we made that a priority to get devices, laptops into the hands of seniors who needed it as quickly as possible. And our schools, our IT department, our Office of School Leadership worked quickly to make that happen. As soon as we were getting them, they were going out to our seniors. Barriers, as we reflect on that time as well, or that the previous school year. Of course, school closures made mentoring and intense support more difficult. So getting kids into buildings, sitting side by side with a student to work through, you know, that class that you're almost ready to pass or that credit recovery work that you're doing through Edge Annuity, whatever the case might have been. That was super challenging because kids and teachers and counselors couldn't get, you know, physically together. Our spring 2020 and then our subsequent, subsequent summer 2020 intercessions also had to be conducted virtually, which was also difficult for some of our students and staff. And then still a continual, you know, lack, a continuous lack of access to technology for some of our students, including connectivity issues. We worked through those as quickly and as fast as we possibly could, but that was a barrier for some of our students. So with that, Paul, if you wouldn't mind going forward.
Okay, Dr. McNeil, do you want us to stop after each goal for questions? Or do you want us to just go ahead and go through?
Yeah, it's really at the pleasure of the president. So President Taylor, would you like us to go through or just stop now for questions on goal one or then move to goal three after questions?
Sorry, I prefer that let's ask questions for each goal because it kind of keeps us where our thinking is there. Unless one of my colleagues thinks differently, that's what I think would be the best way for us to approach it. So thank you, Dr. Lamarcas, for that pause. And I believe that's typically how we do it. So just in terms of, you know, goal one, 1.2.1, you just all, really all, everything in part of the goal one. If you have questions about that, then I'll entertain them. I saw Dr. Nicolet first and then trustee Thigpen, we'll just take this goal by goal going forward. I also see you too, Vice President Cottle.
Hello, Diane here. You know, my questions are around helping me and anyone listening understand everything, everything. So many things that are going on that we wouldn't know unless I asked. So when we look at goal one, academic growth, and we look at 1.2, what are some of your examples that are in place for ensuring closing the gap? Some examples there, and then I'll just continue real quick, smarter balance. Can you share a little more information about smarter balance? Because I personally have gotten several questions about the smarter balance assessments. And I know this is 2019 through 2020, it's not today. But how did that look last year in the spring, 2020? And then when you talk about EL students and the exit rate, what about our sixth graders through 12th graders? And what does that look like? And another question about examples, when we talk about support systems in 1.2.1, what are examples of those support systems? Thank you.
I'm just making a few notes here. I will start with, I think trustee Nicolet, your question about how we are working to close gaps, how we've previously done it in this and how we're doing it this year as well. And maybe a little bit about our plans for next school year. And then I'm going to just put on notice, Dr. Sandra Eric, who is our Director of Assessment, she has joined us this afternoon. So I'm going to ask Sandy to provide an update around Sback. And then we'll come back to the support systems that are in place for our seniors. So how, so how do you know what the gap is that you need to close? I think might be another way to maybe reframe the question that you've asked, Dr. Nicolet. And assessment does play a key in that, and Sandy will likely talk about that a little bit more in depth. But assessment is, and I don't mean to steal her thunder here, assessment isn't just necessarily about those summative assessments, end of year, like Sback, for example. It's the daily work that teachers do to measure how well their students are learning and then making the decisions about what they will do if students are not mastering standards, not mastering content. And that's a lot about the plans that we have in place now and that are moving forward next year around our professional learning communities and the identification of essential standards. We are limited, we know that, in resources and such. But that doesn't mean that we're not still paying close attention and providing intervention when students are struggling and not mastering their academics, you know, what they're doing in school. So we also then build around supports through our counselors, through our social emotional lessons, through all our family engagement efforts, our multi-tiered system of supports, all those things that we built to wrap around the school and wrap around the student as well. So I often think of Maslow's hierarchy, kids don't, people don't start to move to that top of the hierarchy until, you know, their basic needs are met. And I personally believe our schools do a phenomenal job in addressing and meeting those needs. So whether it's food insecurity, mental health, lots of things that we talk about on an ongoing basis. But achievement gap for their academics, we need to know where kids are not achieving and where the help and the support and the extra programming and the tutoring, the intervention, where it needs to come in, when a student needs it, and we need to move. where it needs to come in, when a student needs it, and we need to move quickly on that. So that does tie nicely into what we call formative assessment, that day to day informal kind of assessment that our teachers do to track the success of their students. But then layered on top of all of that, our schools, our teachers, us as leadership team, we need to be very aware of what our data is telling us. So when I think about the chart that Laura talked about with our four-year cohort graduation and our kids that aren't getting there as quickly as we need to, we've got to be not just mindful, we've got to be very, very clear in which of our students, our student subgroups are not performing where we would like them to be. And then that's even more of a concerted effort. So I think about EL, for example, and the recent presentations that came to our trustees around the ELD site facilitator model. In all honesty, we just didn't make that up. I mean, we were looking for, you know, what would be the best way to support our ELs, provide the best support with the resources we have. And that's where that plan came from, because we were super mindful of what our data was telling us. So I hope that addresses that question.
Debbie, may I, may I add just a bit? For the record, Paul Lamarcus, I'm not sure we mentioned this, but just for reference, we're focusing in on graduation rate because the other indicators relative to goal one were shared in the fall. That's why the focus on grad rate. But to the question of achievement gaps, let me also say that every, every year, for every child in the district, but high school students, our accountability department provides early warning information. So as a student enters the school year, there is a sense of where they're at. And at the high school level, that's relative to are they on track for graduation? Are they not on track for graduation? The second highlighted success is the work of the student graduation advocates and the family graduation advocates. Those folks, those individuals, for example, will use that information and they'll make contacts with those students who are not on track or who are sort of right on the edge. And they will make contact with their families and they will do what they can with the school to make sure the families are aware of what's at stake, what supports kids might need, what things might be barriers for a family so we can intervene. There's also a host of ongoing reporting relative to on track, meaning graduation on track, that our schools look out through the year. Our counselors and some of our central office staff assist, for example, our reengagement office. And on a student by student basis, we will look to see what we can do to support a child. And that might be that they need to become a fifth year senior. Or it may be that we know that they're not necessarily going to graduate, but we have to provide them continued support so eventually they will. So there is an awful lot that goes on in addition to what Ms. Byersdorf is sharing. It's just very hard to focus in a presentation of this on all the different things that are being done.
Thanks, Paul. And then if I can ask Sandy, Dr. Eard, Dr. Nicolet, to talk to your question about Sback. And I think it was specifically last year for Sback and then maybe this year as well?
Very good.
If I may, if I may, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dr. Eard, this is President Taylor. Before we switch up to Sback, I was trying to say this and I was on mute. Imagine that. After, after Dr. Lamarcus spoke, because I was just thinking that it just at the end of his, his part of the presentation, his part of the response, you know, he spoke to, here are some of the things that we're doing, but it's really hard to get into more of a deep dive in the presentation such as this. I just think it's really important because again, we've been getting a lot of questions on what's being done for this? What's being done for this? What's being done for that? And so what I would say is, I mean, one, we've gotten some of that here today. And I think a really important part is to say, hey, is it working? You know, how's that working out, right? And that's with these measurements, that's why it's important that we have these reports. And I do think that I look forward to our strategic plan conversation that's upcoming, where we can probably go into a deeper dive into even more specifics. But I wanted to just put it out there that this information is being discussed at the board level. It's certainly being worked on at the school level and at the administration level. And it's also being reported back. What have we done? That's good. What do we do about some of the barriers that are there? But then there's more to come. So I just kind of wanted to wrap that again because we're getting a lot of questions. And I wanted to make sure that since we're talking about that, this maybe help people make that connection that here's a piece of that, and then certainly if there's more to come. So, so thank you for that and thank you for that kind of segue, Dr. Lamarcus, that allowed me to jump into it. So now, Dr. Eard, we'll go to you. Thank you for the interruption.
Thank you, President Taylor. So for the record, this is Sandra Eard, the Director of Assessment. So I want to specifically talk about last year's Smarter Balance. Last year, the pandemic hit right in the middle of our state testing window. We had very few students who actually participated in the Smarter Balance assessment before we went on spring break. And then following spring break, we were quarantined. So therefore, the state did allow us to pause and we did not administer the Smarter Balance to students after the governor called for the quarantine. So we do not have census data on Smarter Balance from last year because the pandemic prevented us from administering the Smarter Balance. This year for Smarter Balance, the state is maintaining our assessment windows. So our assessment window started in February and it continues until May 19th. So students in grades three through eight in ELA and math will have the opportunity to participate in the Smarter Balanced Assessment as well as our science assessment for the state in grades five and eight. We do realize that we have students who are choosing the distance learning model for good reason. And they want to maintain that distance. So we do have some grace for those students. We do not have a remote access for Smarter Balance. But if parents are having conflicts with having their students coming into the building for participation in Smarter Balance, all they need to do is contact the principal at their site where their student is enrolled to opt out of the assessment or work out other arrangements for that assessment. So we do have safeguards in place because we know that students are choosing distance learning or families are choosing distance learning for a reason. But we will continue to follow the state direction and administer the Smarter Balance to our students in grades three through eight for the ELA and the math. And we are trying to work it out and make sure that we have arrangements for those students who would like to come in and participate in that assessment. So we've given direction to principals to work that out with their parents according to the special needs of their individual schools. We utilize that information and I think it's going to be very important this year, even though we won't have census participation. It, the Smarter Balance gives us a 30,000-foot level view of our district's academic health. So we can look at and analyze exactly what areas we need to look at as a district as a whole, not necessarily individual student. But we want to see as a whole district, where do we need to apply professional learning, new materials so that we can ensure that our students are keeping up with the expectation of the standards? So I hope I answered your question, but I'm here if you wanted to follow up.
Yes, thank you. And that last part about the 30,000-foot view as a academic health of our district was very insightful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Appreciate it. And I think the last question you had, Dr. Nicolet, was about support systems that are in place for our seniors. So I think maybe Dr. Lamarcus added on more information about those support systems. And then I would also say too, just as a reminder, our high schools are working, right, to bring back more kids in person, following a recent decision of our trustees to when capacity limits were increased. So our schools are doing that as well. So students that they know or they're aware of might be struggling in academics and again, maybe emotional, areas of emotional need or support. They're contacting families, families are contacting our schools as well, getting those kids back into our school buildings.
And I'll just jump in super quick. I wasn't sure if you had covered this, Debbie, or not. So I apologize if it's repetitive. But each one of our high schools sits with their area superintendent and their entire leadership team within the high school. To go over student by student as far as if they are credit deficient, if they are slightly credit deficient, if they are significantly credit deficient, if they are on track. And then they split those teams up. And then typically within the high school, there is a very strong relationship with an adult that will keep that child on track. And if they are not, then that adult intervenes to make sure that that child has what they need.
Thank you. And that's the kind of nuance, thanks everyone who shared information. Those are the kind of nuances that I think are important for our community to hear because there is so much going on to support our students. Thank you.
I was talking and yet again, I was muted. Sorry. I was wondering why you didn't say anything, trustee Thigpen.
I was wondering why you weren't saying anything.
Okay. Well, trustee Thigpen and then vice president Koppel, my mistake, go right ahead.
All right. Thank you all for all that this information entails. I have a couple of questions and the board has heard a lot of, a lot of folks speak about this. So two things. One, I wonder if someone can speak to credit recovery and how that better benefits our students than holding them back a grade? Because I think that is way more beneficial. I think there seems to be a misconception in the community that credit recovery is some way of us just trying to push them out of our schools versus actually trying to help our students, which I think is the intent. And then the second one is just having visited a lot of schools, a lot of my high schools recently. And of course, a lot of students are, have taken on a lot of part-time jobs, some full-time jobs to help their families, which is, you know, troubling when you were thinking about graduation rates. And so I'm wondering what we're doing at the school district level to encourage the business community to, you know, allow students to have flexibility with, you know, jobs that may be available to them because we want them to stay in school. We want them to graduate on time and all of that. And while, you know, I worked a part-time job in high school, I still knew that I needed to graduate and get my high school diploma. So I'm curious about those two things.
I'll jump in there, trustee Thigpen, again. This is Deborah Byersdorf, and I'll start with your last question. We very much are hearing stories about students who have secured full-time jobs, even during, you know, the regular school day to help their families during these times. So, and I think maybe Dr. McNeil might be able to jump into with previous conversations she's had with the Chamber of Commerce around this very subject. Going forward into next school year, knowing that North Star Online School will be our dedicated distance or online school. We're trying to change the terminology there, but will be the only online school. North Star is nice in the way it's set up, its schedule works. That could allow for some students to continue working full-time every day. I can't guarantee that would be the case. I don't know that not to be the case with North Star. But the stories we hear include, you know, students that are working a full-time job and they're heading home at night and they're catching up on their schoolwork at home, whether it's, you know, Edge Annuity, for example, our online program that's used for credit recovery, and I'll talk about that, or other work that's coming from their school and coming from their teachers. So it's definitely been a challenge and it's definitely been a struggle for some students as well. And to be honest with you, we understand the situation. Our schools are being very sensitive to that and working with the families, working with parents and guardians about that as well. Because next year, we need you back in the building. We need you back in into the school full-time. So I think it's an ongoing conversation with our business partners. And Dr. McNeil, I don't know if you wanted to jump in there with anything?
No, absolutely. And we had had a great conversation with the CEO of the Chamber, Anne Silver, who is a huge proponent of, you know, our students and staying in school and education comes first. So I truly appreciate her help and support on getting that word out to our business partners. You know, trustee Thigpen, you and I were over at a high school the other day and, you know, the principal was really concerned about one particular student and one of our partners and their work schedule. And so it is a constant communication, but it is something that, you know, education comes first. But just as, you know, Deputy Superintendent Byersdorf mentioned, a lot of times our students, they are supporting their families because of job losses. And that's real, that's real in our community. So hopefully, as more people are able to go back to work, that allows our students to put the focus where it needs to be.
Thank you. And then just the credit recovery portion, and then I'm good.
So at the, so at the high school levels, different than the elementary and middle, we don't retain at the high school level. So for example, a student who may not be ready to go from, I don't know, third grade to fourth grade, remains a third grader. It's different at high school because it's based on the credits that the students earn each year. They need to get to a total of 22 and a half credits in specific areas in order to graduate with a diploma. And then for our Washington County School District Honors Diploma, that's 24 credits. So when Dr. McNeil talked earlier about those grad tracking meetings that we do, they actually also extend into 11th graders and often to 10th graders as well. And one of the metrics we do follow is credits that our students receive at ninth grade level and 10th grade level as well. So we don't leave it until the senior year for it to be a surprise to the school that, oh, you know, student's not quite where they need to be with credits, which then brings us to credit recovery. So Edge Annuity is the name of our credit recovery program. And we actually implemented that, the first year of implementation, if you'll remember, was last school year. So 2019, 20 school year, we had three quarters of a year under our belt until our buildings were closed due to the pandemic. And then Edge Annuity, which had been primarily a credit recovery program at the high school level, now became a credit accrual program. So seriously got stretched. But we've learned a lot of lessons in using the program. And I think just maybe as a side note, there would be opportunities moving forward to use it for credit accrual. It's a pretty robust system and it's based on Nevada Academic Content Standards. So anyways, for credit accrual. So credit recovery, I will tell you, as a former high school principal, I'd rather my students would have passed the class the first time they took it and not had to worry about credit recovery and not having to do credit recovery over summer breaks or winter breaks or whatever the case might be. But we do have a robust credit recovery program as well. We have teachers that are highly trained in this. Our counselors work super closely with those, with those teachers. They work very closely with our district level, Edge Annuity folks and extended studies as well. And if a student often, you know, often when students become seniors is sometimes when the gas, the pedal gets pushed and they're ready to finish it off. But often, they do need to work through the summer and later into the fall to finish up courses. And we actually have until the end of September. October 1st is kind of the drop dead time for a student to graduate and to be part of that year's graduation cohort. So our schools work with kids. Dr. Lamarcus talked about fifth year students. Sometimes those fifth year students can finish their work within the first semester and be done and be part of the graduating class for their graduation year. And then I think I would be remiss, just I want to do a shout out for Rise Academy as well. I think some of you have had a chance to visit Principal Constantino over at Rise. They do a wonderful Principal Constantino over at Rise. They do a wonderful job too, with students that maybe aren't looking to come back to the, uh, comprehensive high school site for fifth year. But look to go over, um, to Rise Academy to finish, to finish their, um, studies there as well. So we're also exploring ways to maybe expand some of their programming going forward as well.
Thank you Debbie. I, I really appreciate you and your team, um, helping to shed light on this and hopefully clarify some things for members of the community. So thank you for that.
Thank you, trustee thick pin.
Thank you trustee thick pin. Vice President Cottle.
Thank you, Madam President. And trustee thick pens question about. High school students gaining jobs is something that I, I've heard a lot about too. And. Frankly, in, in high school students who have emailed me directly have said that that's one of the main reasons why. They wouldn't want to go back to the building full-time this year. They would rather stay on hybrid or full distance. So they continue to work their jobs. And I think that's something that. It's a new dynamic. We're going to have to. Deal with as we, as we go into next school year. Cause when students start making money, they, they want to keep, keep doing that. And, um, next year is going to be different. So my question is coming back to the, to the metric we're looking at, one, two, one. That 18, 19, five of the nine were met. So the target was met. And then, you know, 19, 20, we know what happened last spring. So is the district doing anything different? From 18, 19, 19, 20 this year? To, to meet this metric? Or are there things that we are doing different? To meet the net metrics? I understand that spring 20 was so unique. It could be just that one-off where we feel really comfortable with what we were doing. Or do you feel that some changes need to be made? I know superintendent McNeil, um, this is 18, 19, you, you weren't superintendent. And so, um, and then 19, 20 was 19, 20. And here we are. So. I'm just curious if there are some different approaches being done, um, now that we are, um, this new administration in place.
Oh, great question, Vice President Cottle. And, and you know, it's something that we. Struggle with as far as making sure that, you know, that all of our students are on track. And, and I know our high school principals, you know, they. Uh, you, you know, you're, you're in the buildings as well too. They are working really, really hard. Um, and so when we're taking a look at, we're, we're talking about those, those data. Sets and when we're looking at credit deficiency. But it also has to do with core requirements and course requirements. And so making sure that our schools have, um, electives. Um, and then that'll, you know, that goes to allocations as well too. Um, but. It's engagement. We want to make sure that our students are engaged. Um, you know, this year, you, you know, you mentioned it's 19, 20. But this year, you know, looking at athletics, looking at band, all of the things that keep a child engaged, career and technical education. Those are critical, clubs and activities. And so we're really working hard to make sure that our schools are able to. Within all the COVID protocols, but then going into next year. That those are opportunities for our students because they're critically important to keep our students engaged. Athletics, band, music, clubs and activities. The more that we're able to do that. The better that our students are going to be able to be engaged. So I don't know Debbie, if you want to add anything or Paul, feel free to. Jump in.
Go ahead, Paul, if you wanted to add.
Well, um, I think Dr. McNeil, you, you really kind of covered it. I mean, we have, we've attempted to continue. To reach families, reach students. It's been challenging because of both hybrid and distance learning. So for example, when we point out the work of the SGA's or the FGAs, that's just that much more challenging because of the current context. Um, I would offer, and you're going to see that later, and I, I would suggest that it's most pronounced with. Uh, or it's just most obvious with chronic absenteeism. Because of the pandemic, it is going to be extremely difficult. To compare 19 and 20 to 18, 19. It's also going to be incredibly difficult to compare this current school year. In terms of any sort of a reasonable trend. I think that'll become clear when we talk about chronic absenteeism. We're, we're stretching ourselves a, as much as we can, uh, to engage families, to return to home visits. To provide additional access to information through digital means. The restrictions have, have been a challenge and they were a challenge the last quarter of last year. As you know, from spring break forward and they continue to challenge us.
I'll jump in real quickly too. This is Laura Davidson, Director of Research. Um, for our part, we've, um, been sending schools updated data as soon as we have it. So we recently sent. Course failure rates from the first semester. I know you've seen, um, our course failure rates from this year and know that's a challenge. So we sent lists of individual students to each high school. With those, um, numbers of kids who are missing at least one core course. We provided by special population group by race or ethnicity so that. Schools have all the information that they need to help support summer planning and think about fall and how they're going to kind of group students. In ways that are going to be most beneficial. So I just wanted to add that.
And I'll jump in there Lauren. Thank you for saying that because I was going to share that, um, a lot of information is shared with schools, but I, I also want to add to, um, trustee Cottle. That that information is not just dumped on schools here, figure it out, see what you need to do with it. There's a lot of folks again that wrap themselves around the school to help them understand the information and, and put some changes in place. So for example. Dr. McNeil talked a little bit about this master scheduling for next school year. A, a, a master schedule is the, um, philosophy. It's the guide for, for a high school. Whether it's CTE programming, the number of advanced placement, if it's Worcester as an IB school, et cetera, definitely guides the, that school and what that school's about. And those master schedules are going to have to stretch and change next year based on. This school year. And then I'd even go back to, you know, the, um, uh, 2019, 2020 school year. So that work is actively happening. And I'll say too, I've been able to participate on all the, um, the meetings with the, um. High school principals, area superintendents and their teams, which often include assistant principals, lead teachers, counselors. They know all their students. I mean, they know their students that are in the green and are doing fine. Uh, yeah, he's doing fine, but we're watching this, um, all the way to their students that. You know, they're, they're trying to find where the student is. Um, the student is kind of vanished and they're not sure, uh, where, where the child is. So. Schools are also making home visits as it's appropriate, um, to do so. And then I would add as well. I had written down engagement. So I, so what Dr. McNeil said, absolutely. That's what gets kids in the door, right? They want to come in. They want to have fun. They want to be with their friends. We know that. And then while they're there, then we quickly try to do all the other work that, that we, we need to be doing. But when we've been able to, I think about music programming, for example. When restrictions were lifted, that would allow band students to, to be able to play a wind instrument. With a face mask that had a little cut in it, you know, I, I mean, we were doing things as quickly, we have been doing. Things as quickly as possible to get kids more and more engaged in the, the things that happen at all, all school levels. But especially high school as well. We've worked so, so hard to make those changes as quickly as possible when we were allowed to, to do so. So.
I, I really appreciate that information. Um, I remember in the summer or early fall last year, we received, uh, a pre, a brief presentation about. Juniors from 1920 that are seniors now and the struggles of getting them. Through last year into this year. Do we feel that we? Got them to where they need to be, where they're on track. I know there are some challenges with sophomores and freshmen as well from last year. But this year seniors coming out of last spring. I mean, do we? Do we feel comfortable about where we are? Or do we feel like we have, we have work to do in the next couple of months?
Oh, we, we definitely have work to do in the next, we'll have work to do till, you know, I, I mentioned earlier to that October 1st. Deadline with, with some students. Um, nobody's giving up on any of the students. And, and even though we're, we're, um. You know, I think about eight, eight weeks until the end of the school year with finals week. No, nobody's giving up on, on what, what needs to do. Our teachers are amazing. Um, you know, finding ways for students to make up work. Giving, um, extensions perhaps, trying, trying to do what they can. I mean, they, they've got to be able to assign grades, right? Based on mastery of standards, based on mastery of content. But they're being super creative and they're working together at the school site. They work together, um, uh, with like departments across the district. We have ongoing meetings that for. Our ELA, uh, English Language Arts Department leaders meet, uh, monthly. And take information, ideas, supports back to their respective department. So it's not just in the school, it's going across the district is, as well. Um, and then again, um, as I mentioned earlier, the support from our departments, our MTSS department, our, um, family. Engagement department, our area superintendence, our CTE department, as you heard earlier. Everybody is, is focusing on kids and especially this senior class because. Last year's senior class, I mean, they got three quarters of the way, right? And then the pandemic hit. These kids, the senior year have been, it, it's been a senior year unlike any other. So trying to also create normalcy, some kind of a norm. So we're, we're doing that and end of the year activities that I know we, we presented to the board as well. Keeping our kids connected with us. Um, there is such a thing as senioritis. I know that there is senioritis. So we're trying to work through that as well. So it's busy. It's really, really busy in our high schools right now.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. This is, this is our, our first, uh, our first goal that we're taking a look at. Um, any further questions on this piece? Since we've already had the discussion, I mean, this is, this is indeed, um, this is an, an action item. And, um. I think what we should do is just take the, uh, the, the, the motions along the way so that we don't have to go back after we've talked about two other, other goals. So as I look at this, I'm looking at my little cheat sheet here. And I have to look at this, um, looking for a motion of the trustees accept the metrics reporting of the progress of, um, of goal one. I'll say of goal one on the bridge strategic plan for this, for this reporting period.
President Taylor, I do have names for the public comment.
Comment. I'm sorry. When you like, when you, when your camera came on, like dang, I forgot public comment. Yes. Thank you, JJ. Please. We want to hear those names.
The board received emails from Shelley Buchanan and Carrie Pruitt.
Thank you very much. And I have, I have looked at, um, been watching public comments. No, no other, no additional public comments on this item. Have come in, um, since we started this meeting. So thank you again, JJ. Again, uh, both public comments, although not read them to the record, they, they were sent to us previously. So hopefully we've already read those. And they will be made a part of the, uh, formal record, uh, for this meeting. They will be included when the minutes are posted, when the final version, don't look for tomorrow. What we've gotten to me is I didn't see the pup. It won't be there tomorrow. It takes a few days for all of that to come together. But when the final posting is there. For the, uh, uh, the video and the record of the meeting, then, uh, the public comments will be included, will be included. So that being said, once again, I'm looking for, um, a motion to, um, to accept the metrics and reporting. Uh, and the, the metrics and reporting of progress for goal one on the bridge strategic plan for this reporting period.
Done moved.
Motion by Vice President Cottle, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, uh, Dr. Nicolet. Okay, you have seconded, but thank you, thank you very much. Uh, we've already received public comment. Um, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hey, great. The motion is carried. Let the record show it is unanimous. And again, I do appreciate, we, we've been getting more questions. Just about what are we doing academically to, uh, to make some progress and show some progress. And I appreciate. What we're able to see today as, as Dr. Nicolet say more than 30,000 foot level. We know there's more to come. As we, as we talk about the strategic plan, but, um, and it's also good to see that we're measuring to see where we, where we hit the mark. And, uh, where we have more opportunities to get better. So thank you so much for that. All right, let's go on to goal number three. I'm not sure who's taken the lead on this.
President Taylor, um, Dr. Lamarka for the record, I, I'm taking the lead, but I believe Dr. Davidson will be helping me. Unfortunately, we won't be able to hear from Delisa Crane, our amazing director of family school partnerships tonight. She has a personal commitment that. Didn't allow her to be available for this meeting. Goal three is, uh, at least part of it is around family engagement. Truly the building of relationships with our families, trusting relationships, making sure they have access to the information that they need. Uh, so that in partnership with us, we can support, uh, their children as they learn in our school district. Uh, in terms of, uh, initiatives or, or the key metrics that we're looking at, we're really looking at a couple of different ways of. Of measuring family satisfaction. The first, uh, area is really looking at satisfaction among families in terms of their ability to access information and resources that are provided to them. Unfortunately, uh, we don't have data to share tonight. Uh, the board of trustees was provided a presentation. I actually believe it may have been. Maybe just a month before, uh, COVID last year, might've been two months before. Delisa Crane's, uh, department in collaboration with the Office of Accountability and collaboration with the University of Nevada Reno. And through sort of the direction of the Council on Family Engagement. Was building a family engagement index that really looked at multiple pieces of information. So that we could better assess whether or not, uh, schools were forming those critical relationships with families. And the district as well, not just schools. That index really combined, um, responses to the climate survey. Response rates relative to, to the climate survey, changes in response rates relative to the survey. Uh, it looks at, uh, the number of individuals that are actually accessing, uh, infinite campus. And changes in terms of who's accessing, because we've had. Some groups of parents that traditionally have not accessed that information as much as others. And then we also look at parent university participation. That family engagement index was basically put on hold because of COVID. Part of that is, so the responsiveness of families had, it, it's great. It, we've never had more responsiveness from families because of COVID. The seeking of information, wanting to know where their children are at. So in, in terms of the, the, the index was really built on trends that over time. So again, we have a situation in which COVID has kind of reared its head and makes this sort of, uh, not a reliable index at this point in time. Noting that. We had did a lot of things, especially at the end of the 2019, 20 school year. We, as a district, we built a family facing webpage that provided all the information regarding distance learning. You'll remember that it was our distance learning webpage. But it also had a second page that provided just a robust set of resources. That covered virtually every need, uh, a family might have, whether it be educational, whether it might have to do with employment or. Housing security or, uh, food security. We have provided intermittent webinars and forums, uh, using the digital platforms to engage with families. And in large part, that's been successful and in terms of participation, we've had more participation this year than we've, when we've had previously. Something we started to be, uh, work on, uh, last spring and it really, uh, got more formalized this school year, but we were kind of doing it. Regardless of the formalization, uh, was essentially setting up a hotline for families. And this centered primarily around technology access and use. Uh, so as we were providing, like we should as a district. You know, computers for students to be able to log in. We then also had to support them so that they could actually use the technology that was provided. And so this was a, a critical need. Uh, and then again, I'd, I'd like to point out the, the work of our family, uh, graduation advocates that. Do, uh, they're instrumental in developing the relationships with families or they have been. With, at the school site level. Terms of barriers, technology, uh, access and use, uh, has been a barrier, but that's something that we have worked hard, uh, as a district to overcome. Uh, in terms of communication with families. Especially last spring, it was more pronounced last spring than this school year, but it continues to some extent. But we have. Different teachers using different platforms at times to communicate with parents. And that can be very difficult. Especially if your child has multiple teachers or if you're a parent of multiple children and different teachers are using different technology. It just stretches that capacity. As much as we've been able to engage with families online, uh, it is no substitute for some of the key in-person opportunities. it is no substitute for some of the key in-person opportunities such as home visits. We still do home visits, but we stay at the door. We don't go into homes at this point in time, some of that will hopefully and likely change coming forward. Attendance has been an ongoing barrier in this area, it's been confusing for families and for us. And then I already talked about the family engagement index. The second main indicator had to do with parent university, parent university is is an opportunity for us to partner with schools in providing courses for parents, for families, which again, provides them sort of nuanced information about accessing information or what literacy might mean. There's a host of different sorts of classes, what the multi-tiered systems of support process is all about. Across the blue ribbon, you do see our actual satisfaction rates as well as our targets. In 1819, we exceeded, or no, our actual was 95%, our target, yeah, was, I'm sorry, 90%, so we exceeded that, our target for 1920 was 96% and we did not meet our target, it was 91%. We need to do better and we need to meet our targets going forward. What I can tell you, what Delisa shared with me is we collected data relative to this parent university participation up through March. We didn't, we then canceled virtually all of the remaining parent university classes as well as some of the key activities, and some of those were really critical for our work. And in this vein, chart the course, which I know some of you have attended in the past, actually designed for high school age students to talk about what you need to do to complete high school and move on to college. That large-scale event that we partner with UNR and TMC on, that was canceled. That one is traditionally very well-received. We've also had some large-scale literacy efforts that we've been doing with kindergarten parents as well as elementary school parents in recent years, those had to be canceled. And traditionally, those have been very, very satisfactory opportunities. So she does believe that that depressed this rate to a degree. In terms of successes, her staff continues to support schools in building the capacity and emphasizing the critical need of building relationships. And our schools are well aware of that, they know that already, and they do amazing work in engaging families. It's been an incredibly stressful period for our families. It's also been an incredibly stressful period for staff, and some of, many of our staff have families. And still dedicating time to these efforts has been admirable. Listening to families and adapting coursework based on their requests has been an area of success, and we've seen increased teacher leadership in the area of the home visit projects and in terms of literacy nights, those sorts of things, those have been very successful for us. Very challenging, offering parent university classes via remote learning. I know we're focusing in on 1920, but that has been a difficulty this entire school year. For example, when we do a parent university class, traditionally, we will do things like provide for childcare at the school site so that the parents can fully engage. So we all know how that can be a challenge when you're at home trying to engage and also, you know, supervising your children, probably during the dinner hour, given the timing of some of these courses. Technology access and capacity has again been a barrier. Just time commitments. This is all we have prepared for goal three. And Laura, I didn't even give you a chance to talk, I don't know if you had anything to offer?
No, I think you covered that nicely, Laura Davidson for the record. The only thing I'll add is that it's been really helpful, Delisa's office has developed in partnership with us some reports, so each school can monitor their own satisfaction rates from the parent university classes they offer at their site, so they can use that open-ended information and the survey results to make some of those adaptations. So they have lots of support from family engagement staff to understand those reports so that they can use that information to make changes in the course offerings and the way that they deliver instruction to help support their parent engagement strategies at their school.
So President Taylor, I'm not sure if there would be any questions on goal three.
Well, we're going to find out and see. If anyone has any questions on this, one of the things I will say is that I appreciate, you know, you're just being so upfront, really and transparent about, hey, there, we got to do better. You know, that's, we didn't hit where we want to be, and we need to do better. And I appreciate that because it's, you know, the measurements are there for a reason because we know that's part of the progress that helps us move forward in terms of, you know, of student success and certainly the parents being involved, parental involvement is a big part of student success, so I certainly appreciate that, your being upfront with it. I will say myself, love some of the hotline and the and the opportunities for the Youtubes or Zooms or, I think they're on Zoom, yeah, that parents could call in and get help with technology. But you know, we woke up one day, we're in this brand new world, and that was something that was really scary, I know for a lot. So I really appreciate all the extra things that were done to help parents learn to navigate and maybe to not be so afraid and not think they're out there by themselves. And so, in the midst of, you know, we know our parent engagement program is a good program and Lisa and her team, they do an amazing job over there. But I just really wanted to just certainly acknowledge the creativity and us being in a brand new world and how do we still do something with that, right? Certainly work to do, absolutely, but I certainly want to acknowledge in very difficult situations, not just packing up and saying, well, there's nothing we can do, right? I think that's really a tribute to Lisa and her team and everyone who's involved. All right, Dr. Nicolet, I've said my piece, I see your hand, so let's hear from you.
I'm just going to add to that positive nature, I look forward to when things kind of settle down and you can work on those indexes and collecting of data and making sense of what you'll see. I know that there have been some strategies that have positively impacted our students and our families, and I look forward to seeing what those are so that we can continue to do them. Because I think we know that COVID has provided us innovative thinking opportunities and I want us to capture those and continue to incorporate them because I know that that's been happening, and I want to thank you for that.
Yeah, let me comment, this is related to both what Dr. Taylor and you, Dr. Nicolet, just mentioned. And Mr. Cordell asked this question with goal one, and so I'm just going to answer for goal three. Delisa's group has really thought out of the box this year, and I know we're kind of focusing on 1920, but we have been doing some very creative things. I think we talked with you, it might have been December, I can't remember which gymnasium we were in, but we were going to school sites, I think Vaughn in particular was the one I talked about that night. We're projecting images of Infinite Campus and also some of the other platforms like Teams onto the wall, and then families were in cars and they're watching that. Well, I think it's tomorrow night, we're actually going to be at the El Rancho Theater. I think Dr. McNeil may be there for a bit of it, where it's going to be a drive-in sort of family engagement night. And we don't know what to expect, but we think it's going to be really cool. And, you know, that's to her creativity and the group's creativity and thinking outside the box.
Absolutely, I mean, that's the kind of thing that I think is, I thought like, wow, that's kind of crazy, but that's actually kind of cool, right, when I heard about it, so I'm with you, I hope a lot of parents, a lot of families take advantage of it and you just can't get to a larger screen, you know, that's for sure, to really be able to see what is going on. So it's there for everyone, so thank you for that. Others, Dr. Nicolet, your hand is still up, but I think it's just still up. Any other questions, comments, anything like that on goal three? I'm seeing people shake their head, so that being the case, as we did through the form goal one, before we get to goal number five, I'll entertain the motion at this time, if it's the pleasure of the board, to accept the metrics and reporting progress of goal three of the bridge strategic plan for this reporting period.
Done, moved.
Okay, that was fast, I think that was your trustee thick pin?
Yes.
In and out, all right, my ears are working really well, all right, may I have a second, please, if there is one?
Second.
Okay, got a second from Vice President Cordell, further discussion? Or any public comment, JJ?
We have not received any public comment for this item.
All right, thank you very much, okay, that being said, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposition? All right, hearing none, the motion is carried, then let the record show that it is unanimous. Thank you for your work on that, we're going to go to goal five, but I do want to give a reminder that the governor is scheduled to address the community on COVID-19 and other actions that may or may not be taken. And we want to through the form as we did previously. The last time this happened during the board meeting, we will break just a couple of minutes before five o'clock, he's scheduled to appear at five. And we will take a recess just before five, so we can all tune into that and then gather again at that time. So we don't have, we don't have refreshments being delivered to you, but that would be a good time to go ahead and DoorDash something if you like. All right, going into goal number five, who's our lead on goal number five?
That would be me again, Dr. Taylor, and definitely Dr. Davidson will be tag teaming this one with me. So goal five is really our goal around safety and security and creating a positive school climate and optimal learning environments. There are a number of sort of indicator areas we're looking at. These include improving employee workplace satisfaction. I think that's actually the newest of the kind of initiative indicators that you all added not too far long ago. We'll talk a little bit about chronic absenteeism and the need to decrease it, reducing disproportionality relative to academic access as well as discipline. And then we will talk about perception data and how students and families and staff feel about engagement, positive relationships with school community, feelings of safety and social emotional health.
Okay, so I'll start this one, Laura Davidson for the record. So as Dr. Lamarcus mentioned, this is a new measure for this year, one that was added stemming from some of the data we've been monitoring about staff work stress as a result of the pandemic. It's the first time it's been added to goal five here. So in December, this measure was approved but had not yet been fully defined. So we wanted to show how we will be proposing to define this measure now and as we start thinking about our recovery strategic plan. So for this measure, we propose using two questions that we've been asking on the staff climate survey and this year, the staff reopening survey since 2016. So we've been monitoring work stress among our staff for a number of years. And those two questions relate to the percentage of staff who disagree or strongly disagree that they're burnt out or feel tense, restless, or anxious at work. So those are two questions we've been asking for many, many years. Prior to the pandemic, this percentage hovered right around 58% for all staff. In the fall of this year, we saw that number shrink to 27%. So more than twice as many staff currently reporting burnout this year compared to last year. So our plan for this metric is to administer just a very brief survey to staff in May of this year with these proposed questions so that we can monitor progress from the fall when we last asked these to the spring, as well as we'll be asking a few other questions from that fall reopening survey just to document process and help inform planning for fall reopening. So we'll report out on this data again, once we have that data from the May survey and hopefully we'll start to see these numbers increase at least back to the pre-pandemic numbers. So some areas of success we've had in the area of staff satisfaction is that staff are reporting high levels of teamwork this year. I think everyone has really jumped in to support each other at the building level and the district level. We saw that in the fall reopening survey of staff. Many staff have also said that they've enjoyed the smaller class sizes associated with the pandemic. Overall staff this year in particular are reporting really high satisfaction with school leadership. But we know we have a ways to go on this measure, it's why this measure is included for this year. So the new and multiple learning models have created a ton of work stress for staff. Many have had to adapt their lessons to multiple formats. We've talked about this already, but we know technology was a challenge for many, both students and staff. That included things like not having enough devices or not having adequate staff or student devices and challenges associated with navigating multiple technology platforms. The substitute teacher shortage continues to be a challenge for schools this year, especially with so many staff out because of exclusions and not having that pool of adequate substitute teacher coverage. Many of these things were barriers to staff work satisfaction pre-pandemic, but we know that this year really exacerbated a lot of these unique stressors this year. So we'll report out on our progress for this one and hopefully put together some different metrics for our next two-year strategic plan to start really monitoring staff satisfaction and work stress in a more defined way.
Let me add, just before we move to the next indicator, let me put in a shameless plug for the trauma conference next week. Our keynote speaker who comes to us from the University of Virginia, Tish Jennings, she's going to focus around secondary trauma, impact on staff, self-care as really an ethical obligation and burnout. And then Eric Olson, who works within Catherine Loudon's Counseling Department, he's doing a breakout session for staff that's really focusing in on self-care and really how the adults take care of themselves in order to provide support for students. I think this will go a long way, it's a strategy we're using this year to improve work environment perceptions. So chronic absenteeism rates, I mentioned earlier when we were talking about graduation rate, that there is some difficulty in comparing some of our metrics year to year because of the pandemic. And chronic absenteeism gives us a really kind of interesting window into that. So if you look at 2019-20, our target was 16% and we measured it up to the middle of March. And as you see, when we hit the pandemic, we were at 13%, so yay, we met our target. The problem is, is we didn't have a good way of measuring attendance for the rest of that school year. And the way chronic absenteeism works, we know that it went up. Now, we have reason to believe we probably would have met this target anyways. But I do want to remind you that you saw information earlier this year, I believe it was at Worcester in January, if I've got my meetings right, where our overall chronic absenteeism rate right today is somewhere around 37%, I believe. And that has to be heavily influenced by the pandemic as we're looking at trend data in front of us, and so we know it's an anomalous year. The point being, this school year is going to be very difficult to compare to last school year, and then we expect to see huge improvements in it. And again, that's going to be hard to compare to 2021 because hopefully COVID is going to be behind us, at least in sort of its intensity. Anyways, with chronic absenteeism, we have continued, and we did this last year, and we continue to do it this year, stressing the monitoring of chronic absenteeism at the school level. I know that Dr. Davidson and her team have built some amazing reports within BIG that helps schools do this. We've also provided professional learning so that schools understand that oftentimes absenteeism is a signal of other underlying issues, not just that a child doesn't want to attend school, and that's critical. We continue to work to integrate strategies around attendance within our multi-tiered system of supports framework, and that work has been very positive. And we are achieving greater clarity when it comes to monitoring attendance, but that's really something that's more of a 2021 strategy as opposed to a 1920 strategy. Barriers, again, and we've already talked about it a little bit, it's been very difficult to track attendance. Barriers, again, and we've already talked about it a little bit, it's been very difficult to track attendance. There's been a lot of confusion on whether assignments have to be included, completed in order to mark a student as being present. We, we've, I think we have gotten to a point with our schools now to where we're more consistent in, in how we're taking and monitoring attendance. Doctor, or Debbie, our deputy superintendent Debbie Byersdorf mentioned this earlier. The restrictions associated with COVID have really affected engagement. And that's not only engagement, getting a student through the door, but that's engagement once they're through the door. Because of things like wearing face masks, it's just that much more difficult for engagement to occur within a classroom. The distancing, the teacher having to be so far away from students. This has been very challenging, but as we approach engagement, we've got to look at it, not only just getting kids to school, but then making them super excited about what they're learning in the classroom, providing them relevant feedback so that they want to do better and come back. And the last thing I'll say, and we've, we've really witnessed this through some of our processes around behavior and attendance. There are multiple stressors affecting our families and some of them are very intense. And at times, education becomes the last worry. And that's unfortunate because it really impacts our kids. But when we have people grappling with where they're going to live and what they're going to eat and where they're going to work, sometimes education becomes the, the least of those stressors. And so we've seen that. I'm going to move to disproportionality. Dr. Davidson, recall, were you going to do the banner?
Yeah, I can do that. So for this measure, we typically report on progress towards reducing disproportionality in two areas. Advanced course participation in high school and suspensions for all grades. We report the data in the form of likelihood ratios. So, Dr. Lamarcus, if you want to move to the next slide, I can kind of orient people to what these numbers look like. So this chart here, I'll start with, it's the Advanced Placement International Baccalaureate Dual-Credit Career and Technical Education Access. So all of our advanced courses. And the goal with both of these measures, advanced courses and suspensions, is to move all 11 groups towards one. So one is considered proportionate where you see that dotted line. So for example, if 2% of our population is children in transition or homeless, we would expect 2% of our advanced placement courses to be comprised of CIT students. We'd expect 2% of our suspension population to be CIT students. So instead, as you can see on this slide, we only have about 1% of our advanced courses are comprised of CIT students. So should be 2% based on their numbers, but we actually see 1%. So there, as you can see on the bottom of that slide, half is likely to participate in advanced courses as we, as we expect, just based on their numbers in the population. So you can see that represented at the bottom of this graph is 0.53. So again, half is likely to participate in advanced courses, given their numbers in the overall population. So if you're in a group that's over one, you're typically overrepresented in the population. And if you're under one, you're typically underrepresented. So for advanced coursework, we want any of the groups with a ratio of less than one to increase towards one. So for the target, if half our groups move towards one, then we've met standard. Unfortunately, as you can see on that slide, for this metric, none of our 11 populations moved towards proportionality in 2019, 20. We'll talk about some of the barriers in a moment, reasons why we think that happened. But I'll go ahead and move to the suspension slide, just so you can have all that data in your heads before we talk about some of the areas of challenge. So for suspensions, it's sort of the opposite. We want any of the groups with ratios over one to decrease towards one. So we want them to be suspended less frequently. For this measure, we saw two of our groups improve in 2020 and that was our, they're highlighted with an asterisk, Native American and Alaska natives and students with IEPs, so our special education population. So Dr. Lamarcus, if you want to go back to that original slide, we can start going over some of the barriers and successes related to these two measures.
Sure. So in terms of success, what? Well, in terms of success, we continue to build stronger professional understanding of disproportionality. As you guys can see, it's a very difficult kind of metric to understand, let alone display. And, and I think it's displayed fairly well, but it's sometimes it's difficult for people to wrap their head around it. But we are moving folks towards a better understanding and also an understanding of what contributes to disproportionality. Things such as implicit bias. We did see an increased number of students, a percentage of students graduating, who graduated, who completed at least one AP course or IB course or a career in technical education, a CTE course in the 2019, 20 school year. And we, I did mention also that the Board of Adoption of the Anti-Racism Board Resolution, I, I realize you all did that in October of this school year, but we began work on it prior to the 2021 school year. In terms of barriers, we do point out here how difficult some of the year-to-year comparisons are to make. The advanced course content has been particularly challenging through remote, remote learning. And we do think, and, and I think we've seen this across the country, quite frankly, that existing disparities prior to COVID have been amplified by COVID. And, and so we do think that is contributing to what we're seeing. I will also just mention that there's a bit of a push-pull relationship between disproportionality, right? So those, the, the, the percentages among the groups are dependent on one another. So when we see one group get worse or one group get better, we're going to see, I'm just going to tell you, there's a dependency between those percentages. Dr. Taylor, do we need to take a break now or do you want us to hit the last indicator?
There we go. Um, you know, it is five T a little bit less. Why don't we take a break just to make sure if people have to do, take a little personal break before they tune in? Then we can certainly do that. And then we'll take the last indicator and then I know we have some questions. We'll get to those as well. So we will be in recess until the conclusion of the governor's press conference. Certainly mute your mics and, and certainly hide your cameras, but let's pay attention on there. There won't be a time where we'll get back in session, but we'll get back in session when the press conference is over. Okay, thanks, everybody. We are in recess. All right, everyone, we can start coming back together. Dr. Lamarcus, can you pause for just a minute? I can't see everyone and I want to make sure we have everyone back.
Yes.
Thank you. It looks like it's looking for, oh, there we are. Okay, everyone's back. Thank you. Dr. Lamarcus, we can jump in to, obviously that was interesting enough and we'll have an opportunity to talk about that when we get to that agenda item. But let's jump into a goal five at this time.
Okay, I'm trying to figure out.
There you are. Just play it.
Can you see it?
Yeah, it's in your, it's, it's not in presenter mode, though.
Right, slideshow, sorry.
There we go. Not from the beginning, yeah.
Okay, I believe we are actually through.
No, no, I'm sorry. Now we're back out. We're not on the, yeah, from current, you push that right there. There we are. Okay.
I believe we were through three of the indicators. Now we're moving to the fourth and I'll turn it over to Dr. Davidson.
Okay. So for metric 5.1.4, survey composite measures, for this measure, we're looking at staff, family and student responses on the annual climate survey. For staff and students, that survey typically occurs in the fall and for families, it occurs in the spring. So for this measure, we want staff, students and families to have more positive perceptions of school climate each year. Because survey measures tend to be a little bit less reliable than other academic metrics, we take a rolling average of three years of data to stabilize the measure a little bit more. So for this, we have nine separate targets for the measure. As we compare perceptions of climate in three domains, engagement, relationships and safety across those three stakeholder groups, students, staff and families. So for this, unfortunately, we did not meet our nine targets for this metric and declined just very slightly in each of those nine areas or stayed the same. Some of the areas of success for this included, just there's been a great increased focus on social emotional wellbeing for schools, both during the spring school closures and throughout this year, really. We've also had, as, as been alluded to earlier, a lot more stakeholder engagement on surveys this year. We've had sort of unprecedented numbers of folks participate in our surveys, which is always positive. We want more voices represented in the district and school decision-making. So we hope that continues even after this year. As a result of digital learning, we've had more families and students participating digitally in different ways that we've never been able to access them before. So for many students, distance learning has really worked well for them and engage, has engaged them in ways that didn't exist previously. So that's been one, one area of success this year. Barriers for this measure, perception data is often more difficult to act upon compared to other academic metrics. We know it can be a little bit bouncier than other measures, which is why we compile it into multiple years and never look at just a single question. So we've never encouraged major decision-making based on a single year of data or a single question on a survey. For example, at a school level, that's for sure true as well. So we would never encourage principals to make a decision just based on a single area of climate. We know that compiling all those along with academic data is the most useful way to look at some of this information. We know that social distancing, remote learning, other COVID-19 related changes to how schools happen has been very hard for many students and families. Engaging students and families who aren't inside our buildings is difficult. And that was true in the spring during school closures and we know continues on this year. And just, I, I know I presented on this before, but we continue to see underrepresentation of certain voices on our stakeholder surveys. And at most of our events, we'd like to have greater participation from our families whose children are African-American, Native American, Pacific Islander and learning English in particular. Just to ensure that we're making decisions in the best interest of all families and students. Finally, you'll notice that there's a large asterisk because the year of the asterisk on all our data points. But there's an asterisk on the family survey data for 2019, 20. Our family climate survey opened just two weeks prior to spring school closures. Does that really cut our response rate down almost by two-thirds? So that's something that we're going to be monitoring in future years, but we know that was a, a big challenge, both for our family engagement index as well as for, for this metric. And then I'll just quickly touch on this. So we normally aggregate for three years, but I wanted to just show you the 2018, 19 compared to the 2019, 20. So just those two years compared with each other. You can see in most areas, we either stayed the same or went down just a little bit. And then we don't set metrics around the social and emotional competency measures that we have on our student climate survey. But I want to just show those so you can see some of that data. We did increase in some of those areas and students are positively reporting that they're feeling confident about their social and emotional skills in certain areas. So that was one area of success.
So I, I think, Dr. Taylor, that concludes the information we were going to share. And I know that goal five is a fairly large one, but I don't know if there are any questions we can try and answer for you all.
Well, I think so. I think we have, we are, we already, we had a one hand up. Trustee Church's hand has been up for quite some time. Thank you for your patience as we got through the rest of the presentation. And then Dr. Nicolet has a hand up as well. And this is for our discussion. And the motion that is the pleasure of the board God bless you, on goal five, which has several indicators on here. One, two, three, I think just four, one, two, three, four. Yeah. Okay, so we'll go to, we go to trustee church and then I saw Dr. Nicolet next and then trustee Bigpin.
Thank you. I just had a question on the chronic absenteeism. I didn't see it here, but at last I looked at some of the previous charts, it was 59% for distance learning. My question, what I was pondering and some people asked me, is it possible that some of these students are not really absent, but they're gone? They've left the state, they've left the school district due to the economic situation. How do we know that? I, I kind of had somebody refer to them as ghost students. Can you comment on that if they're really even here?
Sure. So a couple of things and, and Dr. Davidson, please jump in. One thing, you're right about the rate, but this data is 1920, but your question isn't necessarily about that. So chronic absenteeism is any student that attends 90% of the time or less. So the kids that we're reporting on, who are chronically absent, they're still enrolled. If in fact, a student doesn't attend for 10 consecutive days and we do not know their whereabouts, they're actually unenrolled. Or under certain circumstances, that can be for 20 days if we know where they're at, but they continue to not attend. They're actually unenrolled. We have seen, I believe Kyle Camp from Dr. Davidson's office shared us, shared some data with us around December. And there was definitely an increase in withdrawals, but not anywhere near the percentages we're talking about. So, so again, chronic absenteeism is a real problem, but the kids who are chronically absent are attending. They're just not attending nearly enough.
Okay, thank you for that, Dr. Lamarcus. Trustee Church, did you have another question? Your hands still up, so you're good. Okay, we'll go to Dr. Nicolet and then we'll go to trustee Bigpin.
Hello, thank you. So on the, the last page before the questions, 5.1.4, the student surveys, what age does that cover? I'm assuming kindergartners don't take the survey.
Correct, yeah. Laura Davidson for the record. So we administer the survey in grades five through nine and 11. It's about 34,000 students who participate in that survey every year. We do not survey students younger than that. It's a very cognitively difficult task to ask students to, to think about a statement and then rate, think about their own competencies and climate and rate themselves. So anything really below fifth grade is incredibly difficult to do in terms of surveys for students.
I totally hear that. So you said grades five through nine and 11. We don't do 10th grade?
Certain schools, high schools are required because of some of their social worker funding to assess students in grades 10 and 12 as well, but only those certain schools. It's a pretty big task to bring in 1,500 to 2,000 students for a survey, especially in the middle of other testing that they, schools might have. So we try to give them a little bit of a break and the data is pretty consistent from grade nine, 10, 11 and 12. So that's why we only do those two grades for most high schools.
Thank you. I knew you'd know. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Davidson. Trustee Church, I mean trustee Bigpin, sorry about that.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a quick question and we received this in public comments. I won't name the person, of course, but just want to see, they mentioned here that they're not seeing foster youth on our list of special populations and in terms of our data that's available. And I may have missed it as well. So I wonder if someone can speak to that, if we're tracking that information and if we can make that available.
Sure. When, when the, the board originally designed this, foster students was not identified as a group that we were tracking, but we have an, we have in fact been tracking them very closely for the last couple of years and we can provide that data later and they will be included on subsequent presentations.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Lamarcus.
Okay, we have any other questions, comments? JJ, do we have any public comment on this? On goal five?
We do not have any public comment on goal five.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, seeing no further comments and if it's the pleasure of the board, I'm looking for a motion to accept the metrics and reporting progress of the goal five bridge strategic plan for this reporting period. Okay, so we've got a motion from trustee Bigpin. Is there a second? Hey, nobody wants to move, but everybody wants to say. Hey, nobody wants to move, but everybody wants to say. All right. We'll give that one to again trustee Calvert because she doesn't speak up very often. So we'll give that one to her. So moved by trustee big pin, seconded by trustee, um, Calvert, that we accept, uh, the bridge reporting and, uh, and, and progress of, of goal five on the bridge to teacher plan. We have no public comments. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Okay. The motion is carried and let the record show that it is unanimous. Uh, thanks to, uh, to all of you, Dr. Lamaca, uh, Dr. Davidson, others who may have jumped in to help. Really comprehensive and great timing, really on answering some questions that we've been getting, um, uh, from our constituents, from community members. And I really thank you for the work and look forward to, uh, more to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, we are going to, in, in light of, part of in light of what we just heard, and we think the, uh, the segue will be, with the flow will be a little better if we, if we, uh, switch around a little bit in here, agenda item 6.04, prior to agenda item 6.03. Um, so we'll hear, um, um, our, um, our update, our action to review. The COVID-19 case counts are ongoing, et cetera, et cetera, the ongoing agenda item that we've had, um, since, uh, we returned to school, that's 6.04. And then we'll get into, uh, 6.03, which is a, this, a presentation, discussion of the local control, the local, uh, mitigation and enforcement plan. This is required, um, um, by the, by the governor, and he spoke to that some just a little bit ago. So obviously that just happened, so we don't expect a full presentation on what we just learned. But this does give an opportunity to, um, to at least see how that might work into what, um, what, um, what might be said. So we'll go to you, Dr. Lamaca on the agenda item 6.04.
Thank you, uh, President Taylor, uh, Dr. McNeil, uh, members of the board for the record, Paul Lamaca, chief strategies officer. Um, this update should be relatively brief as it's been, uh, lately. Uh, but I'll, I'll, I'll walk you through some, uh, fairly up to date data as of the, the ninth of April. At that time, and I still think today, uh, the TMRPA, uh, meter, uh, the COVID risk meter is in the high range. Unfortunately, the last couple of times we've shared data was in the yellow range. Uh, but number of days we entered into that, uh, area. Based on some trends, it may tick back down to moderate in the coming days, hopefully knock on some wood. Uh, here is a, uh, sort of a trend of the indicator level information, uh, that the meter is based on. Uh, we can see that daily new cases is really kind of responsible for that, that uptick. Uh, but in the last couple of days, I do believe we've gone below, uh, five. I think we were at 4.5 today or yesterday, the last time I looked. Here's the, the dashboard that was most recently updated on, uh, April 9th. I, I do want to, uh, comment just for a moment on our dashboard. So as you know, um, the board has taken cert- the sharing of information regarding, uh, COVID very seriously. Uh, we had lengthy, lengthy discussions at the end of last school year throughout the summer. They informed the decisions the board made in terms of reopening. Um, early in September, I believe it was September 10th, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. Uh, there was a meeting, it was at Sparks High School. We presented a bunch of, uh, data to the Board of Trustees. Um, and then made a commitment that we would begin to share data, uh, as often as possible, reflective of what's going on in the community and in our schools. In order to do this, we've been relying on information that's provided to us from the Washoe County Health District. And then as we have regularly shared, we also look at the TMRPA COVID risk meter. There's really three sources of data that we, uh, get from, uh, the Washoe County Health District. It's sort of like a community wide data set. Um, there's a school age children specific data set. And a- as we've talked about, that's data among school age children, uh, both that are in our schools and outside of our schools. And then they also provide us, uh, data very, that's specifically related to cases within our schools when a student or a staff member has been infectious within our schools. And so we really rely on all three sources of the, of the Washoe County Health District data as well as the TMRPA data. We did make a commitment and an attempt to, uh, change up the dashboard as many as three times a week. And we were pretty consistently able to do that. I think the first dashboard went up September 17th and we've continued to have it up since that period of time. Uh, around Christmas, uh, we, we started getting less frequent, uh, information from the Washoe County Health District. Uh, some of the data was coming to us a couple of times a week versus, uh, three times a week. That reduced our reporting, uh, because we've, we've only committed to, to reporting when data is available. Uh, and then more recently, um, I believe the date was March 17th. Uh, the, the district and they work with UNR and a group at UNR. They went through a major sort of process change in how they're cleaning information. Um, and, and so the website was actually down for a couple of weeks, at least in terms of our ability to access it. And so we did update the dashboard on several instances, but we really couldn't change some of the data because it just wasn't available. We tried to use some of the information from the state actually to, to make some changes for average daily cases as positivity. I think at this juncture, so we want to report data. We think it's critically important. We know how important it is for you to make sure our schools are safe and you want to know what's going on. Uh, just because of the flow of information, I, I think what we should do is shift to updating this once a week. Uh, and more regularly if, if data is available. Uh, but I, I'm pretty confident that we will always be able to update it at least once a week. Uh, I have, we have included asterisks that indicate that we're trying to update this more frequently. And just quite frankly, we haven't been able to keep pace with that due to data availability. So that's kind of a, just a kind of a comment that I, I wanted to share with the board. When we look at our dashboard, we unfortunately, we see daily cases per 100,000 have actually been going up. Uh, and you saw that in the TMRPA COVID risk meter as well, uh, where there's more points associated with that particular indicator than we want. We are below that, that sort of magic number put together by the Harvard Group of 15 cases per 100,000. So we're still in okay range, um, and hopefully things will, will begin to go down a bit. Test positivity, we had been as low as 5.2, um, but the last time I checked it was, or for this update, it was 6.6%. So again, uh, that's better than, than, uh, it was for a long period of time. Uh, but you know, the World Health Organization, uh, really wants you to be at 5% or less. So that's a little bit, it's starting to warm up. Our actual cases have been fewer and fewer within schools. Uh, and the school age children cases, especially among the two ages, uh, youngest age groups have been on the decline. It's a little bit troubling what we'll see with 11 to 18 year olds. Uh, this graph is sort of from the onset all the way to, to the ninth and, and the kind of the trending cases. And so you can see in that period of time, um, really October through, uh, January where we were, we were peaking, we were at incredibly uncomfortable levels. It's significantly declined and we've been basically in a holding pattern. However, if you look at the far right, uh, the orange group is our, uh, sort of our secondary, population group for students. And you see that their rate per 100,000 is actually just above, uh, our older population. It might be a function of vaccinations. But that's, that's not what we want to see. We want that to, to go lower. So, uh, we are, I, I, I think we, I mean, you can look at the graph and you know, we are in a good place relative to where we were when we opened up schools. And, and we're, we continue to be kind of in a good place community wide. But I, I do think, and I know that the governor had his, his talk and, and you're going to discuss that. I do think we need to remain vigilant, um, so that things don't worsen unexpectedly.
Uh, Dr. Lamarc, I'm going to jump in right now. Oh, you're getting, go ahead. You finished. You're just about to shift. So go ahead.
That's it. Um, so if there are questions or if, if Dr. McNeil has comments, um, that's all I have.
Okay. Well, I, I'm going to, um, um, make a, a, a comment at first this year for my, for my colleagues. You know, just so I don't forget, JJ, do we have any public comment?
The board received an email from Larry Kates related to this agenda item.
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay. Um, and on that, since that was, uh, the public comment that we sent in and I, I, I appreciate your, um, your comments. I'll go ahead and comment now. I appreciate your remarks, Dr. Lamaca, on, um, on the dashboard and then making the changes so that we change the expectations around that. And then make it clear that this is really dependent upon data that we get. You know, and not something that we, um, that we have and we just aren't sharing. Right? I mean, we've gotten those emails before that it, uh, the dashboard isn't up to date what's going on. Um, and it's really, um, you know, as things change, then I can certainly understand as they're trying to balance the, the, what, the, the health district, they're balancing this with, and they're still doing some testing and they're still doing vaccines. So there's a lot for them to, 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 uh, to, to juggle all at the same time. So I can certainly understand their data coming a little bit more slowly. Uh, but that way we just make it clear on the way, on the dashboard, on the site that one, I, I certainly, I'm comfortable with that being weekly. Another isn't our decision anyway. And just making sure it's known so that people know this is what they can expect. I think would be great. So thank you for being responsive, um, to, to that. Uh, now we'll go to clerk Minneto and then the vice president call.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Lamaca, you have just been amazing through all this and so informative all the time. I just have kind of a bizarre question. Um, so we have the total amount of cases. If somebody, sorry about that. If somebody did it twice, do we count them as once or twice? But if it's cases, it would be twice, right?
I'm sorry, Dr. Minneto. I didn't hear that fully.
No, I'm not surprised.
Somebody gets COVID twice. Is that going to be counted as one case or?
That would be counted as two cases. And thank you very much for your kind comment. Just doing my job.
It's a very good question. I think it comes down to, that's how the health measure counts it. And we, you know, that data feeds us. So, so a good question. Okay. Vice President Callow and then trustee big pin.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, um, Dr. Lamaca for your presentation. I think one thing I would like to do, if it's okay, Madam President, as I like to make a motion to drive some discussion. Um, and if it doesn't get a second, then it won't drive discussion, but I would like to at least make it and then our, see what discussion comes from that. If that's okay.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Okay. Um, I move the Board of Trustees, Direct Superintendent to provide a presentation at the next scheduled board meeting on April 27th to end the hybrid model. Bring all hybrid students back into buildings five days a week effective May 3rd, 2021.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor that the, the superintendent, um, and staff make a presentation on, at the next meeting, uh, which would, um, change the learning models, um, back to a traditional, to a traditional model. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a, there's a motion on the floor by Vice President Callow, seconded by trustee church. Okay. Now it is open for discussion. Open for discussion. We open, I guess I'll, go ahead trustee church.
Yeah. As I understand it, it wouldn't obligate us to do away with the hybrid model. It would put it on the agenda for discussion as an action item for the next meeting, correct?
That is correct. Um, so then the superintendent can, can bring us something, um, because there's, she doesn't have that for us tonight, and so I don't think we should do that tonight, but we put on the agenda for an action item on the 27th.
All for it.
My, um, my, my comment on this would be, I, I would be more comfortable with the motion that asks the superintendent to, uh, make a report that, that comes back. And I'm, I'm, I'm sure she was thinking that they have to come back with something because things are going to change on May 1st anyway. And that one of, and one of the things that we consider is, is, uh, is learning models. Kind of much like we did before when the governor made the change to the capacity level and to the transportation differences, we asked staff, okay, see what this looks like to you, bring it back to us. And then we got to make a motion one way or another. I get concerned from what we learned last time and changing the learning models. That's changing the master schedule. Um, that's a big deal. However, we may be able to get to the same results in that if somebody's on hybrid and they want to come back, they need to work with their school to do that because they can't go back and start all over, right? Um, or if someone's on distance and they want to come back. Again, they need to work with their school, um, to do that. So I get, I, I feel a little bit boxed in on, on the motion. Um, I would like that to be an option that we consider, but I want other options to be a part of that. I want, I want the full consideration to come back to us for us to take, get some, get some, um, community feedback, get some community input on that. Um, learning models is certainly part of it. Uh, as obviously capacity in schools, we have athletics that we know are out there. All of the things are really, really important and the governor has kind of taken off the lid, if you will, and widened the guard, the, um, the guardrails, which is fine. But I wouldn't want it to just be about learning models and come back and say, give us something to, give us something that considers all of those things, not just hybrid. But give us something that, give us some things that consider all of those. And it may be two or three motions that may come out of that. I would feel more comfortable with a motion like that. Dr. Nicolet, I see your hand is up.
I will have to thank you, Andrew, for opening this door. I think it's a good conversation to have. What comes to my mind first is learning models, and I think we would all agree that there's the academic learning model and then there's that social emotional, uh, learning model. And for me, I will define that as all those activities that bring students to schools, keep students in schools, engage their families in the community. So rather than, this is how I'm thinking, rather than have us concentrate at this time on changing the learning models, because that is extremely complex. If we were back in January, I, I'd feel differently, but, um, I would prefer that we concentrate on, um, bringing, uh, in- increased, um, spectators to our activities, no matter what the activity is. We work on that, that we begin to work on what a full opening in August will look like. Because that to me is just right around the corner. And, and lastly, uh, graduation. I would prefer that we spend our time looking at in-person graduation and leave our academic learning model the way it is so we can concentrate on end of the school year activities.
Okay.
Madam President, I can chime in on this too.
Yeah. I was just, I was just, I was just trying to get back over. Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. And then I know your hand is up for another comment. Trustee big pin goes up for this one. So we'll go to you and then we'll go to Vice President Callow.
Yeah. I, I, I think, um, I like where, where we've been going since we last voted on allowing as many kids back in the classroom as possible without causing a disruption to those who want to stay on their own current learning model as well as the master schedule. So I would be, I would be interested in hearing what superintendent staff come back with and in terms of what we can do to allow more students to come back in, um, without causing a major disruption to, to learning and, and to, um, staff who've been very overwhelmed over the last 15 months. Um, and I agree with, uh, trustee Nicolet, I would be very interested in seeing, um, allowing more spectators, visitor spectators to events. I was at a football game this past week and really enjoyed it and, and I saw an opportunity that that might be possible. And definitely am in support of, um, in-person graduation. I know we had elected to allow, uh, each school to come up with their own plans. And I'm sure, um, they've thought of that, uh, but I definitely in favor of those, those things.
Thank you, trustee big pin. I have Vice President Callow, clerk, clerk, Minneto, and then, uh, trustee church.
Thank you, Madam President. So where I'm coming from on this and what makes this different in the last times. And the last time we had the 75% guard rail on and we couldn't get everybody into 75%. And so it's the picking and choosing. And so we, we elected to have it be, the schools work with their communities. The governor has essentially taken off the The governor's essentially taken off the guardrails, and I have not met one person who says, keep the hybrid model. We're not ending distance learning, not changing anything with people who are going five days a week. We're essentially saying, if you're going, you're gonna go every day. And so I don't think it changes that much, uh, but, but that's why I want the, the presentation. Because, um, what we're saying is that you're not gonna alternate days to where, in some cases, the day you're not in the classroom, you're doing homework to support what you learned the day before, you're gonna learn every day. And we've been, we've been given that opportunity. So that's where I see the differences, and I, and I think from a community standpoint, we, we will have to, this will be on us now, because the governor is saying it's up to the Washoe County School District Board to decide how Washoe County School District's gonna operate, and so we will have to explain it. So I do think we need to have that discussion on the hybrid model, because that's the model that gives people the most angst, I guess, from what my perspective. I'm, I'm talking to community members, that's why I start, wanted to start this conversation. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Vice President Callow. I believe it's Clerk Minneto, and then Trustee Church.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Dr. Lamarcus and Superintendent McNeil, do we know how many kids got to go back with our last plan? Do we know a percentage? Do we know? Because I'm just curious. I mean, how many physically got to go back?
Yeah, I don't have those numbers in front of me, Trustee Minneto, at this point in time. We update on a weekly basis for that, um, and I know that we, we typically report that out on our Friday media briefing. So, you know, I can present that on, on Friday, but I don't have those numbers in front of me at this point in time, and I don't want to guess on that.
No, okay. All right, well, I'm kind of with Andrew. I just, I feel like the kids need to be in school. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Clerk Minneto. Uh, Trustee Church?
Thank you. Uh, number one, um, I think the agenda, as you mentioned, and I said I was all for it, but obviously, listening to the discussion, the agenda would have to be carefully worded to include many options. And as I've said all along, uh, to the maximum degree possible, because of busing, transportation, meal services, there's a million different issues that could make it impossible to end the hybrid, but to the maximum degree possible, yes. So that, those are my basic comments on that, that the agenda would be carefully worded, so that when we do discuss it, we have all the options in the toolbox. And then one other thing, I just had a text, and I checked myself. Apparently, some people are experiencing trouble with viewing this on YouTube, if the tech people can look at that. I checked myself, I couldn't get in.
Okay, well, thank, thank you, Trustee Church. You're gonna pause for just a moment. John, if you wouldn't mind checking that out, to see if there is a YouTube access issue. And then we will, uh, just, in, in the meantime, Clerk Minneto, I think you're done, if you wouldn't mind putting your hand down, and same with you, Trustee Church, if that's the case, and then when we come back in, I will, um, we'll go over to our superintendent, uh, to weigh in on it.
Thank you, President Taylor. I'll, uh, take a look right now.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna pause and just be in a quick, a quick recess, so you can take a look, and just see where we are. Trustee Minneto, in case you didn't know, your hand is still up. Thank you. You can, just like you're sitting there like this, my hands are...
Worked fine for me a second ago.
Okay, let's, let's see what John says, just to make sure. Uh, I have, I have enough screens open, but I do not have one on YouTube.
President Taylor, I just took a look. Everything looks good to me. Um, I kind of view it like I'm a, uh, public viewing at home, and it should be good, sounds good, looks good, double, triple checked.
Okay, I appreciate that, John. Thank you very much. Um, like to hear from the superintendent, and then it would be great to hear from our, our student trustee on this, as well as part of, the big part of the concern is, how's this gonna impact students, right? We heard a lot, a lot from students last time, and this is coming up, so I certainly would like to do that again. Um, Superintendent McNeil, and then we'll go to Student Trustee, Victoria.
No, thank you, President Taylor, and you, you know, while I appreciate the, the conversation, you know, we've had these discussions before, and so this agenda item does allow the board to talk about specific learning models, whether it's distance learning, hybrid, or in-person. And, you know, I'm just gonna remind this board, you all were very courageous, and we've had in-person learning since the beginning of this year. Um, you know, we can definitely put together a presentation, but just as, uh, Trustee Nicolet brought up, as well as Trustee Finkin, and, and I know the board understands this, there are a multitude of, of, um, options and factions that we need to talk about. Human capital and human resources is, is huge on this. We still have ADA, uh, compliance that we must follow for this year. We've got transportation issues, and we've also talked, um, quite a bit around, um, our master, uh, schedules, and what that means for students. And one of the issues, one of our principles, if you will remember, is do no harm. And so I want to make sure that we are always putting our students, um, out in front, and making sure that, um, master schedules are a really critical component of this discussion that the board would like to have on April 27th. I want to make sure that we have staffing in place. You know, when, when we come on April 27th, um, that's about five weeks, uh, before the end of the school year. And we must have enough staff in order to do this, and that's, that's a, um, a concern.
Thank you, Dr. McNeil. Uh, Student Trustee, Victoria?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I think with what was brought up tonight, I think it would be very important to think about what, um, Dr. McNeil just said, about it being the last five weeks of the school year. It would be a big change from what we went back, when we went full distance in December, and then changed it again in January. I think a lot of students aren't used to it, but they, they have their schedule set, they have their work schedule set, when thinking about all those outside things apart from school that they have to do on their hybrid days. So I think changing that once again would make it very difficult for everyone, even if it's just the last five weeks of school. So I would say that it would be better to just leave it as is for now, because it would, it wouldn't make that big of a difference, since it would just be the last five weeks of school.
Thank you, Student Trustee Victoria. Appreciate that student perspective, as always, we appreciate student perspective. Uh, Trustee Finkin, something else on this, before you bring up an additional comment, because we do have a motion on the floor that we need to take care of.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Um, I, I, I wonder, and I'm trying to remember, and if someone can remind me, I think our last motion on this, when we were voting on the current learning models, was, didn't we say to also allow more students back in where possible, or did we not do that?
We did, um, if I can say, we did, we did say ask, uh, uh, schools to do that, to bring in students as much as possible. Remember, that was, that was the limitation. That's when it went from 50%, actually from 35% to 75%, and now it's going to 100%. So that gives, that, that creates a little bit more space in terms of who can get into the schools.
I just couldn't remember if we had left it at, because I know we were trying to make it to where it would automatically just increase as time went on, as the directives changed. So I couldn't remember if we did that here, because I'm thinking, you know, a workaround for this would be that we say, allow the schools, because I've been to plenty, I've been to 14 schools now in 100 days, and the more recent ones have said that they only have a hand, some have only have a handful of kids left on hybrid. Some are, um, you know, could take more kids, but because of the 75%, you know, they can't. So I think if we leave it up to the individual schools to decide what they can handle, I think that might be a, a good, um, compromise here, so that we're not fully overwhelming the system.
Thank you, Trustee Finkin. I see Dr. Nicolet, and then we'll go back to Student Trustee Victoria.
Uh, thank you, and, uh, thank Kurt, that was, I was, you put it eloquently, that's what I was thinking. I've spoken to, to quite a few middle school and high school principals, and I will say across the board, every one of them, when I bring up the subject about coming back, they bring up several things, master schedules, um, they bring up, uh, staff, and, and so many things that revolve around that. Desks was one of them. Um, I gave my desks to the school down the road. So, um, I want to, I want to reiterate again that I think if, if the schools can now, middle schools and high schools can now find a way, with all the challenges before them, to bring back activities, uh, JROTC activities, uh, those, those ceremonies, um, theater, band, and, and do those things that will still take a lot of work, because they do, and, and you're kind of out of shape now. Those things, I think, will fill the student's soul. Of course, there will be some, some students that would prefer to be there full-time, some that would prefer not, but if we concentrate on the activities, I really think that, that can, uh, touch a lot of, uh, of our students and our families. And I want to also thank those that came before me, Jackie, Ellen, Angie, and Andrew. You guys made some tough decisions along the way, and I truly respect that and appreciate that, and I guess the tough decisions continue. So thank you.
Yes, they do. Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. Student Trustee, Victoria?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to add to what Trustee Finkin had just said about, um, the school, the schools getting to choose that. I feel like since schools know that they can, they're able to let students know and make them aware of their, their allowance of letting students come back as they choose. I think that would just, um, allow students to choose if they want to come back or not, with leaving the hybrid distance learning and in-person models as they are now. And students can choose if they want to go back, and it would make it easier for everyone, as students are able to choose if, if that would work better for them.
Thank you, Student Trustee Victoria. I'll, I'll just add my comments on this, in that, um, again, I, I feel more comfortable with a, a motion that, um, asks the superintendent to come back with looking at all of those things, not just targeted to the hybrid model. I think there are a lot of things to look at, as, as some of my colleagues have said, and I think we want to look at all of those things, and not just one thing versus another. And then that's when we really get into, well, we're having this conversation, what impact would that have on, on, um, master schedules, just like we had before. Now, it's five weeks left, what, 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 what the hell would that impact students? Um, looking at, uh, some of the things, I guess, that, that, uh, Trustee Church said, uh, transportation, um, nutrition services, workers. Do we have the teachers? Uh, and, and I'm thinking about some of the emails we got before from, uh, the, from the students, I mean, from the teachers in the building, uh, that talked about desks. And now we have our groove now. Now we're in a roll now, and that, those kinds of things, and, and, and thank you so much for not making that change. Um, all of those things are, I think, are, are still in my mind, and I would like to see how staff recommends, um, we deal with whatever those things are. I mean, I too, I am absolutely, um, an advocate. I believe that students ought to be in school. Let me just say that. I believe students ought to be in school. I absolutely agree with that. Um, I think we just want to consider everything about it. I would love to be in a place where, hey, everybody who wants to go back to school full-time, your family wants you, you can do that. I don't even know if we have the support for that, but I'm just saying, I'd love to be that. And if you want to, great. Your family wants you in there, great, fantastic, great, but you know, if you, now I work on Tuesdays and Thursdays, or I work every, or whatever the case may be, that, those are real issues, or I wa, I watch my, whatever. Any of those things, it still allows for that kind of flexibility, because people have had to make it work, whichever way they can work. They can make it work up until now, and so it, it allows, um, it allows some of the flexibility for families to certainly be involved, but it still says that schools, get them in there, it's 100%, um, you know, get them in there as much as you can. Um, even further now with, with, uh, with, with the new levels, I would feel more comfortable with a motion that was broader, that said, hey, come back with this. And maybe that isn't even necessary for a motion, because it's on the agenda every week, right? But if we wanted to be, um, specific in that matter, we certainly could, so that we make sure that Trustee Callow's concerns are, are certainly known and in there, that we want it to be about learning models, about nutrition services, about activities, about attendance at spectator events, I mean, at all of these things. Which, by the way, may not even have to wait two weeks, because we don't vote on that anyway. That's something that staff does with superintendent and her task force, um, and they meet on Wednesdays. So the spectator thing may not even have to wait for two weeks, but I, I certainly get it, graduations. You know, they've submitted, school submitted plans for if, if, if the restrictions are here, remember they have, we have, they got tapped into an ABC, so now it's a matter, what does that look like to give them more room? I just think they're, give them a room. I, I would feel more comfortable with a motion, if even necessary, but I'm comfortable with one, um, um, because it's important to some of our colleagues, that, that, that's it. Let's do all that, because all that needs to be done. Uh, Trustee Church?
The, the important thing is that we do have an action item that meets open meeting law that gives us plenty of options at the next meeting. That's the important thing.
Yep, and what we have on the agenda right now, basically says, we can do any of that, but we can make it more specific, if that's the desire of the trustees. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing what my, what my colleagues are saying, and if that's the desire of the trustees, I think we can. I just wouldn't want to pull one thing out of it. If that's the case, let's make it broader. If, that's my two cents in it. So, Trustee Church, I think you're done, so you're sitting there like this? I'm not sure if you know that. Thank you, sir. All right, uh, Trustee Finkin?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I, and just sitting here, thinking through, and this is a great conversation, and we're, I think we're all on the same page, that we want kids in the classroom as soon as possible, and as safely as possible. Um, so what I'd, I'd like to ask probably both the superintendent and Vice President Callow about his motion is, first, the superintendent, if we were to, you know, if, if Trustee Callow, for example, were to amend his motion to say, you know, let's allow the schools to, uh, bring in as many kids as possible up to their 100% capacity. Let me think through this in a second. Um, where possible, you know what I mean? Like, if they can bring in more kids, let them bring in more kids up to, you know, how, however many they can fit in without overwhelming the system. Um, so I wonder if superintendent, if, if that's even possible, and if Trustee Callow would entertain that as a, uh, a change to his motion.
Superintendent McNeil, we'll go with you first, and then we'll go with, uh, Vice President Callow.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that. Um, you know, I mean, I think all of us, with, with the governor's announcement today, I don't... We've articulated some of our concerns, you know, and we also know that we have some teachers out there that are teaching both the distance learning model and the in-person learning model. So there's a lot of cap, human capital concerns, uh, questions that we've got to go through. And like Dr. Taylor said, as you all know, we meet on Wednesday with our COVID task force. So the spectators, graduations, um, the governor announcement, those were already on our task force agenda. So I'm just a little bit, um... I guess concerned about changing this particular agenda item, because it has allowed the board the flexibility to look at each individual learning model, and I think if we box ourselves in to say, um, a certain capacity or a certain percentage, that's going to limit us on what we're going to be able to bring back to the board. So I hope that gives some, some of my perspective on where we are now.
It, it does. Thank you, thank you, uh, Dr. McNeil. I'm gonna ask counsel, if the agenda item, the, the standing agenda item, um, allows the board, should this motion not pass? Right, should this motion not pass? But does the standing agenda item allow the board to, uh, make the kinds of decisions that we're talking about now, in terms of a learning model, or in terms of bringing more kids back from a capacity standpoint, or, or any of those things that was in our purview? Again, we, we don't do attendance at games, um, but it, it, but we certainly could, right? But any of those, does, does the agenda item as it stands, does it allow that? Or should we be more, more specific to make sure we're in compliance?
Well, it's tough, because it was drafted with the, at least as I recall, we drafted it with the intent of giving a wide berth to the board, not knowing where this pandemic would lead. And so it goes all the way from, uh, online only to hybrid to full in-person learning. I think it's reasonable to deduce that anything relevant in between those three could be a part of the agenda item. Is it, it's not my preference that, that we have broad items, but this is unprecedented times. So if this was something that I felt that we dealt with on a day-to-day basis, I would say no, to be totally honest. But given the circumstances, and given the way we drafted it, and given the fact that we made it very clear, to the point where we receive dozens of emails about sports, for example, people know that we're talking about these different subjects, and I think people are on notice, and I think we can reasonably make that argument. And, uh, so I'm, I'm comfortable with that in this circumstance.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. Um, just one more thing before we get, get back to you, Trustee Callow, considering, considering your motion. Um, staff, thank you very much, as since, um, as you recall, right before the governor's, um, directives changed last time, we had a couple of motions, and Trustee Finkin, you, uh, alluded to them. we had a couple of motions and trustee Bigpen, you alluded to them. They just sent them to me. So let me just share this with you, with us, so we can have an idea of what we did before. The one I think that you're referring to, trustee Bigpen, was related to transportation. And it said, the board of trustees directs the superintendent to implement the governor's directives as related to transportation and to adjust the numbers when directives change. I believe that's the one you're alluding to in terms of we said, hey, if the numbers change, go ahead and adjust. That was specific to transportation. And these are motions from about month, the 23rd, February 23rd meeting. The next one, which might be more of what fits into what we're talking about now, but is really up for us to decide as a board, is the board of trustees directs the superintendent to consider all current governor's directives and the development of additional action plans for the further opening up of schools. So that might be more of a catch-all, if you will. That considers all of these things that we're talking about without listing every single one in case we miss one. But it says that we're, they're giving the superintendent direction. We do want you to do this and come back. And then the decision. And then we take a look at all these things that we've been talking about that may have an impact one way or another. So that might be helpful for our consideration at this point. So I'm going to go with you first, vice president Cottle, because trustee Bigpen was asking if you're willing to make any adjustment in terms of your motion. And then trustee Church was the second or so. Any friendly amendment, if it's friendly enough, if it gets too different, we may just let it die and then go for a second amendment, I mean, for a second motion. So we'll see. Vice president Cottle, and then I see your hand to trustee Church.
Thank you, Madam President. So the intent of my motion is to make our agenda item for the 27th very clear so that the public understands what's on the table. So we can get public comment. We can hear from staff. We can, we'll hear from the district. We can hear from families, parents, students. The hybrid model, the only reason it's in existence is so we can have in-person learning. But the state restrictions could not allow us to get everybody in the building. Now that the state restrictions are being lifted on May 1st, the hybrid model is no longer needed. And I understand that we have some distance learning and in-person teaching. That was happening anyway. They were just rotating groups of students, which has been hard to manage when those teachers are doing three models because they have people at home in the hybrid, people in class in the hybrid, people at home for distance. It would then go over to two models. So it's, the intent is to have the discussion for the rest of the school year because at least from my perspective is that the hybrid model was in place to get kids in the classroom due to state directives. State directives are lifted. Students can come to the classroom. The hybrid model is really now our preference and not forced upon us. So I think a discussion should be had on the hybrid model ending to full in-person for the students that were on the hybrid model and secondary level. And then students on the distance learning model can finish on distance learning. And then the school year ends. So that was the intent of the motion is not to decide today. Provide direction to have the conversation on the 27th in an open and transparent way where the agenda is very clear that that is what is on the table on the 27th.
Okay. Thank you, vice president Cottle. So in answer to that question, trustee Bigpen, it sounds like you're saying he likes to, he wants to keep the motion as it is. That, and that's the bottom line of what you're saying, right, vice president Cottle?
If I may, I think.
Thank you, sir. If, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. The trustee Church is next. If what you're going to say about what vice president Cottle said, okay, just go to trustee Church and then we'll go to you, trustee Bigpen.
Yeah, just very briefly, I agree with the sense that I want a motion and agenda item that is extremely clear to the parents, the community, the teachers, as well as withstanding any legal challenges as opposed to being more vague. You know, Mr. Roberto is likely right, but I'd rather have it clear so that nobody even thinks about challenging.
Understandable. Thank you. Thank you, trustee Church. Trustee Bigpen?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Sorry for butting in like that. Yeah, I think, I think the reasoning why I was thinking maybe we should just decide on something today was because as our student trustee mentioned, you know, there will be five weeks left by the time we meet next. And so my thought was if we can just allow the schools the autonomy to welcome more students back in between now and then and at the end of school year, that would be a great solution. But yeah, I apologize if I misunderstood the original motion as well.
Thank you very much. Trustee Church, your hand is still up. Did you want to come back with a comment, sir? Nope, you're good. Okay, vice president Cottle?
Thank you, Madam President. Trustee Bigpen, the only reason I word my motion that way is the governor is not allowing us to have that control until May 1st. So they can't bring in, they can't go to 100% until May 1st anyway. So we can get the presentation on the 27th. May 1st is a Saturday, so we would make it effective May 3rd, which is a Monday. So even if we made the decision today, they couldn't do it till May 3rd anyway. So it gives time to have that conversation, the community of the next two weeks, hear the presentation, make our decision, knowing we're making that decision going in. Because until 5 o'clock, none of us even knew this was even on the table today. And then, and then we go from there.
That makes sense. Thank you for clarifying that.
What I may, what I may, thank you, vice president Cottle. And what I may suggest for our consideration then is if we were to, because I agree that we want the public to know exactly what we're talking about. And although we will legally be within what we can do based upon counsel, and I certainly trust them, and there certainly we know that we can legally do that. But it's not, never a bad thing to go a little bit further just to make sure it's clear to the community what it is that we're going to be talking about so that we can really get the input that we want. Just to make sure, so no one says, I wasn't quite sure. I mean, it's nothing, there's nothing wrong with that, in my opinion. So I might suggest that, again, this isn't just about the learning model itself, right? It's also about graduations and other activities. It's also about staffing. It's also about transportation and nutrition services. So I may suggest, I don't know if this would be a friendly that you would consider, vice president Cottle and trustee Church, something that is similar to what we said before, the board of trustees directs the superintendent to consider all current governors, directors, and the development of additional action plans surrounding hybrid learning, distance learning, and in-person learning, transportation, nutrition services, staffing, and other, and other whatever, whatever. That way, we have some listing in there, those things that might be most important. It makes it really clear what we're considering. But we aren't just going to talk about hybrid learning. So I think if we're going to do it and be specific, we ought to really be specific.
President, can I add something really quickly here? Because vice president Cottle mentioned some dates. And so I just want to put it on the record. I am concerned about, you know, if we, if the board meets on April 27th, makes a decision, and, you know, we can't do anything until May 1st. And then to have these impacts or the change happens on May 3rd, the board needs to consider transportation, getting schedules. So all of those things need to be taken into consideration if this is, if this is the board's direction as far as having this discussion on the 27th. That's a very, very quick turnaround time.
Well, then it may be, based upon that, it may be that the board still needs to have the discussion. I agree absolutely with vice president Cottle. But it may not be able to be implemented until whatever, so that there is time to adjust. But the board certainly needs to have a discussion in a manner and in a time when we can take action. I mean, I would, we could take action today, but one, the public doesn't even know about it. So we certainly want to give them more time than that. And we know we don't take control, if you will, per the governor until May 1st. So that, I think, will be important, an important part of whatever decisions we make two weeks from now to say, okay, we want to do this, how fast can it happen? And we would want, I would say then we want that to be a part of the presentation. It's going to take transportation services two weeks or whatever, right? It's going to take Emily whatever time to staff up, and this is what that looks like. And we can't staff, whatever, any of those things, I think would be. That's why I think we need to have a broader conversation about this. So I agree, I hear you. And I think that needs to be an important part of our decision-making on, and two weeks from now, on the 27th. I see two other hands. Trustee Calvert and then trustee Nicolet.
Actually, this is for Kristen, and I think you kind of addressed it. But maybe I'm not really understanding. I do to a degree. But the teachers, how, because some of them, like you said, are doing hybrid. Some of them are doing distance and some of them. So how do we fulfill that going forward with what we're dealing with right now?
Thank you.
That's exactly, so trustee Calvert, that's exactly what we're going to have to be able to figure out is, you know, if I'm a teacher at a middle or a high school and I have distance learning as well as, you know, my hybrid class, we've got to be able to figure out how we're going to schedule that course. And so I don't have answers for you right now. That's something that we're going to have to be able to bring back to the board for this discussion.
And so the students that maybe decide they, like Ms. Victoria said, that they want to stay hybrid, we're not going to force them to come back to school, are we?
That's a decision for us.
That's going to come to the board.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying to understand. Okay, thank you.
No, you understand, if the motion, again, it's not a motion that we're making for it to happen today because we don't even take control until May 1st. And the first day of school from there is May 3rd. But that would be a part of the decision-making that we would make in two weeks. If we say we vote to get rid of, so to speak, the hybrid model, that means everybody, all the students on hybrid would either have to go full in-person or they could go full distance, I guess, if that was a decision that the board made at that time. So I think you're there. You have it. You absolutely have it in your mind. So thank you, trustee Calvert. Trustee Nicolet.
I just want to reiterate that I fully embrace the intent. Students coming back and being with their friends and their teachers and their activities and in their classroom learning together, there's nothing finer. I think that's why we all like to serve on, as school board members. Having said that, I just would want people to know that I cannot vote for this. We do not have enough time. I do think that it is, it is, it is not even right to ask our teachers and our administrators, buses, nutrition, classroom, et cetera, to take this on at the last hour. I just think it's bad practice. And so I would hope that we can give our students and families and employees the right things, maybe the most, the most important things to concentrate on at this late date and continue to learn and have fun. And I just don't like the idea of our employees having to concentrate on this topic at this time. I think on some level, it's frivolous. And so, again, I wish all students were already back in, but they're not. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Nicolet. Vice president Cottle?
Thank you, Madam President. So to broaden my motion, I can keep it the same and add a sentence at the end that says, while taking into consideration all impacts system-wide.
Let's do a couple, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So it doesn't list everything because then we can miss something on the list. It's just system-wide, whatever impacts there are at the list of discussions. So I don't know, Neil, I can friendly myself. I don't know how that even works, but, so I can just add that to my motion.
Yeah, you can amend your motion and then we'll ask trustee Church, who is the second or if he's comfortable with that.
Okay, so I'll amend my motion.
I'm comfortable with the second.
And so can you restate that? Because I'm still a little uncomfortable with it just being about this hybrid learning. I think that really focuses, saying it sends a message, that's not the true message. That is not all that we're going to be talking about. And I want us to be very clear, right? And not that we can list 100 things, you're right. But I think if we say we're voting to get, if we're going to get rid of this or not, and that's what the superintendent is bringing, that's actually just a part of the picture. She's bringing a lot more.
Yeah, so my intent with the motion is because the hybrid model is impacted, because the hybrid model exists because of the restrictions that are being lifted. So there's no reason to have it any longer. That's the intent of the motion.
Yeah, I certainly understand. And I think you're valid in that the reason to have it any longer is not because of the restrictions, but because there's only five weeks left left to school. If we choose to go there, right? Or if because, you know, people are in a groove and then it will really impact master schedules. So the reasoning changes, but that doesn't mean the reason doesn't exist, in my mind anyway. And so for me, it's a matter of weighing all of those things to see what's, to see what's, what is, what is the greater, what has the greater impact? Do we force kids to go back? Do we, whatever, right? Do we mess up master schedules potentially? This is stuff I don't know about, which we won't know about until we get the presentation in two weeks. I hear you. The reason to go to it was what it was. And the reason to get away with it would not be the same. The reason to stay in it would have to be something different, not because of those guardrails. So again, I guess I'm still, I'm still comfortable with, more comfortable with a broader motion. But, you know, that's why we get to vote. There's not a bad motion, right? I'm just more comfortable with one that's more reflective of what we're going to be considering. And I don't think that's as reflective as we can be. Trustee Bigpen?
Thank you, Madam President. And I just want to, it will be just for having the district make the presentation. We have the discussion and at that point, we make a decision on what to do. I'm curious, from the superintendent's side, I know everyone's been very stretched then and eyes on the prize, getting our kids, you know, finished out for the year. So I'm curious from the superintendent's standpoint, how much time and effort is it going to take to put together a presentation of this level to us by the next meeting?
Well, I will tell you, it's going to take up to every single minute that we possibly, you know, that we have. We have two weeks until the board meeting. So we post.
You basically have a week until we post, basically.
We post for Thursday, the 22nd. We typically will give, you know, the presentation to the board on a Saturday. So my staff is going to be working around the clock in order to put this presentation together. And again, I've said it, I've said it several times. It's not just the PowerPoint. It's the work behind the PowerPoint. And there is a lot of work that needs to be done.
Thank you, superintendent. Yeah, I think with there not being much time left, I mean, if I had a magic wand, right? If we all did, we would say, boom, you're all back in school. Everything's good again. I just don't, I just don't want to stretch staff even further than we have. And with so much time, so little time left, I, yeah, I just, I'm on the fence, but I, yeah, it's tough.
Let me ask this, let me ask this if I may, superintendent McNeil. What, based upon, and I know you just heard this like we did, right, from the governor, what type of presentation that maybe wouldn't be so taxing on the staff? That would put the important information that we need in front of the board so that we can make these decisions? Because once those guardrails are down, you know, we're going to be asked to make these decisions by the public. So it's really, we do really need to do something in two weeks. Even if we vote to stay the same, we need to vote, we need to vote to do something. That's going to be the expectation, as it should be. Because as vice president Cottle said, the parameters have changed. So what would a presentation look like, so to speak, that wouldn't be everyone stand up around the clock and so on? So that we can have the information in front of us that we need to make this decision?
Well, it's going to be about staffing, right? It's going to be about human capital. It's going to be about ADA compliance. It's going to be about transportation. It's going to be about staffing cafeterias.
Will you talk about ADA compliance? I know what that means, but can you talk about what that means so the public can hear? What do you mean by that?
And I don't know if Emily is on or not. So if an employee has an approved accommodation, we still have to make sure that we are following that approved accommodation. And so we have several staff members out on those approved accommodations at this point in time. So if we, I'm just, if we do away with the hybrid, right? And there's no more hybrid, then students are in-person, we're going to need more teachers in order to have courses for that. So it's capital, it's operations, everything involved with operations. And I know Pete is on, is on here as well. It's human, you know. And I understand, you know, the issues around the other activities and clubs and those types of things. So that would have to be part of the presentation too. And then obviously graduations and all of that.
Superintendent McNeil, if I could just add one, I'm sorry, superintendent McNeil, if I could just add one thing really quickly. I think, you know, I'm jumping ahead to the next presentation a little bit, but I think it's applicable to this. What we just heard from the governor too is that we're going to have to come up, what I understood, is our own local plan in the next two weeks. And so we're not going to be probably part of the Washoe County local mitigation plan. We're going to have our own Washoe County School District plan that will also have to be developed in the next week so we can get it posted. I am also concerned about stretching our staff so thin, trying to do a local mitigation plan while also trying to say we're bringing all the students back. That's a heavy lift.
May I ask this? We we pretty much have our own mitigation plan right now, correct? Is based upon is based upon some of the governor's directives, but we have we have determined what that looks like in our buildings. So is that is that? I mean, it's not it's not the same plan. I get that. But but we 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 have we have something that we've done in that vein. Am I correct?
We have a mid, you know, a reopening plan that's, you know, we we started all the way back when we when we opened up back in August. You know, and that reopening plan is adjusted when when we
As we make changes.
Went on two weeks, right? A full distance learning. We had to we had to adjust it so that, you know, it's a living document. And so we adjust it accordingly. But I think.
And it would have it would have to be adjusted again, then is what what Pete's saying, right?
Yes.
Yeah. No, that's real. Because we certainly want we wanted on the website. We want people to know what we're doing. And that doesn't happen all by itself either. Yeah, yeah, I hear that. Okay, I see Trustee Church and then Trustee Manette.
Yeah, thank you very much. And as Trustee Thigpen said earlier, we could vote on this tonight. The reason not to is to give the public notice so that they can have their input. And as I believe what I heard from our esteemed legal counsel, Mr. Roberto, is it's going to be on the agenda next week. It's, you know, we can vote on it. So we got to deal with it one way or another. This simply makes it a little more defined for the public to know. Am I missing something? I think I nailed it.
Sure, I I think all of that, all of that is correct. We could we could vote on it tonight because it is inherent in the agenda item as it is. So you're sure you're right, absolutely right about that.
Which means it which means it will be on the agenda next week or on two weeks from now.
Yeah. It's on every two weeks. You're right.
Yeah.
Okay, no, but I I get what you're saying is that the specificity isn't necessary, isn't isn't required in it in the agenda item, because it could be done tonight if we wanted it to be. But but what Vice President Cabal was saying, and and I'm agreeing and probably going further than him, is that people should know should know what it's. So if we can be more specific and let some know, it's not a regular COVID item. No, 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 no. We're looking at some things that that are more to it, which I think is the expectation based upon what the governor said. I think the expectation from the community would be, okay, so now what are you guys going to do? Right? To show that up. Yeah, then to actually show that, I think is really what, although not required. I think that all of us want to have more transparency.
And to be sure positively that it will withstand any kind of a challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Manette.
This is really hard. Thank you, by the way. The more I listen, I think I I think of what we our teachers have gone through this year. And they, from what I can tell, they have kind of settled into an okay place from what I'm hearing from the schools I'm visiting. And I think it could be dangerous if we for their being to change things now. And I know that's kind of not what we're talking about, but we're talking about an agenda item that could do that. So, thank you.
Well, I I hear you, Clerk Manette. I think you're struggling without with with what all of us are struggling with. And it really comes down to if that's the if that's required of schools or if schools have an option, or if we say we don't want to do anything. I mean, it seems like those are the different things that will that that we'll have to consider in two weeks from now when we make this decision. Trustee Church, I think you're good. So if you take your hand down, sir. Thank you very much. So why don't we we bring bring it back to the question. Vice President Cabal, if you would, please repeat your your amended, it was a friendly amendment, your amended motion. And we'll go ahead and call for the question. Get a vote.
Thank you, Madam President. I actually didn't write it down.
Oh, come on.
JJ, would you mind reading my motion? I I probably could restate it close, but not might be exact.
Good, good, good thing JJ showed up. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, hang on here.
Sorry, I probably should have wrote it down.
It's all good.
You usually do.
That's what I'm here for. All right. The Board of Trustees directs the superintendent to provide a presentation to end the hybrid model at the April 27th meeting to move to the in-person model beginning May 3rd. And then there's the amended part while taking into consideration system-wide impacts.
Nailed it.
Okay, that's the motion that's on the floor. And there is a second for that. Is there any? I don't think there's any public comment. I haven't seen any pop up, but but I don't know if it's gone your way, JJ.
There is not.
Okay, no public comment on it. Any further discussion? I think we've discussed it pretty thoroughly. So the motion is to have asked the superintendent to come back with plans to go to to get rid of the hybrid model and take it into consideration, all the other things, the things that we've talked about. Operations, staffing, nutrition services, transportation, and so on. It didn't include graduations. I don't know if that is inherently in there. Because that's a part of a plan that with that with that traditionally come back in 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 this kind in this presentation of Superintendent McNeil?
I'm just going to say that that's not actually in your motion right now.
No, it is. It isn't in the motion and neither is athletics. Although that can be resolved, that'd be resolved tomorrow, probably, or sometime soon. That doesn't have to come back to us because that it doesn't come to us in the first place. Right? We've already given the guardrails for that. And then you guys deal with that. So athletics don't have to be a part of this. Graduations, really, we've already made the decision for graduation as well. And you've asked them, we set the parameters, and then you've asked them schools to come up with their plans. It might be nice to come back and tell us the plans, but we we've already made a motion around that as well. So. Okay, so there there it is. So the whole the whole here's the thing. So what will come out, what will what what this motion does is it really focuses on on whether we have a hybrid plan or not. And then just take and take all the other things into consideration. That's what that's what this does. Did I point it? Get it? Motion maker? Second or? All right, let's get ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, I think that was you too, Andrew, because I saw your mouth move, but I didn't hear you. Okay, all those opposed, say nay.
Hey.
Hey. I believe the nays have it. The nays have it. Should we take a stab at another motion? Because I I do think it's important to have it. And it's five to two, by the way. Let the record show is five to two. Okay, I was in there. So should we take a stab at another motion that gets closer to that? But maybe broadens it up a little bit. I'm I'm open if that's the pleasure of the board. Okay, I see Trustee Thigpen.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I I wonder if we could revisit the one that I mentioned, if this is even good enough to make a motion to allow the superintendent. Or maybe it's a motion to allow all of our schools to allow students to come back in person after May 1st where possible, without overloading all district systems, something to that effect.
All right, let's let's stop there. Let me throw something out to consider as well. The Board of Trustees directs the superintendent to consider all current governor's directives and the development of additional action plans for learning models, staffing, transportation and and other impacts for the further opening up of all schools.
Explain that to me.
You said explain it or say it again?
Yes, sorry. I just want to make sure I understand correctly.
Say it or explain it?
Explain it, sir.
Explain it. What it would be, it goes back to basically what we said before. We we direct the superintendent to to develop an action to to consider the current governor's directives and develop an action plan to come back to the board. Take it into consideration, learning models, which would be, and we can even be specific, for I just pull in some of the conversation around hybrid learning, because I understand that's that's of specific interest. Hybrid learning, distance learning, nutrition services, staffing, et cetera, to be presented to the Board of Trustees at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think it's a, well, that I feel like we're in the same place. I wonder if that feels like we're in the same place of having them develop a plan again, which, yeah.
Is is they're going to have to develop a plan. So I guess maybe they don't have to. I guess they don't have to. We don't we don't want them to. It's up. It's not the governor's orders. It's not the governor's orders. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I think my motion was just, again, trying to just allow for if schools can bring kids back in easily, I think we should allow that. So I'm not sure if I'm going about it the right way or not.
Okay, go ahead. Keep considering. I see a couple of other hands. Well, I'll get to them and come back. I see Trustee Church and then Trustee Nicolette.
A few comments. Number one, whatever we do, I'd like the wording to make sure it says at the next meeting. Technically, the next meeting, which presumably is the 27th. You kind of dealt on this, but should we deal with throw in sports and spectator events? And the only other comment, and this just popped into my head, almost exactly like the same motion last time, just take off that 75% rail with that work. And I'm just throwing it out there. Thank you.
Okay, let me respond to a couple of those. In terms of attendance, spectators and attendance, that's actually that's actually this, we delegated that last time to the to the the COVID Task Force. They meet with school administration, athletics directors. They have that meeting again on tomorrow. Right? And then based upon the governor's directives, and they'll be looking at, okay, this is what because the schools have to actually be the ones operationalizing, right? So that isn't something that comes to us. We can always vote on whatever we want to. But that isn't something that has come to us. We gave some guardrails and then and then let them do it from there. So that's why that wasn't a part of that. And the previous motion did not have a percentage. The previous motion said the governor's current governor's directives. So it was 75%. Now it's 100%, but a number doesn't have to be changed. Right? Because it was said in that way, if that if that addresses that. Okay, another part of we want to make sure that it's either meeting on the on the 27th. So we'll we'll make sure that that's a part of the motion, wherever it is that we land, if we land somewhere. Right? Trustee Nicolette.
Thank you. This question is for Superintendent McNeil. You know, since we we made a previous motion and it passed to charge you with looking at opening the schools further to meet the newer directive 75%. Has that been successful? Have we have we hit a threshold where students have stopped continuing wanting to come back full time? What does that look like?
We're actually seeing, you know, and you all have been in the schools. And like I said, I don't want to report out on any numbers. I don't have numbers in front of me. But we do know that a significant number of students are coming back, both at the elementary level, because we also have concerns. You know, as far as the number of students in the classroom at this point in time, that the physical capacity of the classroom with students coming back. But more students are coming back to the to in person from distance at the elementary. And then more students are our middle and our high schools are doing a great job on even if we are still in the hybrid schedule. So even if I am attending, let's just say on on a on a day, right? And I go to school on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and that's just an example. It's not a true example. It's just an example. Our schools are doing a great job on having the students be able to come in on the Tuesday, Thursday, whether that is, you know, working in the library or getting some additional support. So it's not disbanding the actual hybrid model, but it's getting as many students as we possibly can. And I that that's what the ultimate concern is, is the master schedule on how a staff, how a school is going to be able to manipulate that at this point in time. And I don't know if Deputy Superintendent Byers, or if you want to jump in as well too, to help answer that.
Thank you, Dr. McNeil. And I'll maybe perhaps remind trustees that our recent conversation about master scheduling also our concerns about changing a child's teacher or teachers this late in in the school year is definitely a concern. I do have some numbers to share. Dr. McNeil, would you like me to do that? So over the past two weeks, so the two weeks we've been back in school following the spring break for most of our schools. Incline was on spring break last week. There has been a return to the buildings full time. So kids coming in full time. I don't have that broken down if it was from distance learning or if it was from hybrid. So I'll preface that. Elementary, it would be from distance learning, right? Because there's no hybrid model at elementary. Elementary, 600 students have returned back to the buildings full time in person. At middle school, it's 1600. And at the high school, 400. Students have come back in in full person. So that's nearly 2,500 more students back in full time than just at the beginning of the spring break. We get updated, as Dr. McNeil stated, we get updated from our accountability. Kyle Kemp, our accountability office, Kyle Kemp sends us an update. We're we're getting it actually every twice every week, just so we can continue to track. And then our area superintendents continue to work with the schools. We've had some schools that got to 75% pretty quickly. And others have been able to bring back even more. And again, that goes back to the previous conversations we've had about not all the schools are same, classroom sizes. You know, facilities are different. And I just I I just feel it would I would be remiss if I didn't just mention that those master schedules are are you've heard that they're they're it would be it could be devastating. I'll be honest with you, to some schools to start changing master schedules, and that will take time. That that doesn't happen in two, three days, especially at the high school level. So I I just felt like I needed to share that. So thank you.
Okay. Okay, so as as of where we are right now is we we have an item on the agenda, the standing item, which you see listed here in 6.04, that will continue to be on the agenda. That's what we have on the agenda as of right now. That will be on the agenda in two weeks because it's a standing item. And within that agenda item, we are allowed to make the kinds of decisions that we're discussing per council. If if there remains a desire on this group of this group to be more specific, to make sure we're specifically in the community, know that we're talking about such as hybrid learning or anything like that, then then this will be the time to make a make a motion that would try making a try a different motion, right? That would that would include some of those things. Okay? Trustee Nicolette.
I would like to try a motion.
Okay.
Seems to be that we can do that tonight. I can practice. So help help me out. I'm giving it my first shot. My motion would be that we continue to expand in-person attendance option while adhering to the governor's May 1st school district individual planning update within reasonable operational impacts. The intense there, I don't know if the wording is good.
Well, the only thing on that from my end is that isn't any more clear than what we already have on the agenda.
Let me say this without it being a motion. I would like as as capable, and we don't need to identify that. The decision makers can do that. Operational impacts, continue to allow, I don't like that word, allow, in-person attendance as 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 the ability allows. I mean, I don't want to make it come back everyone, one and all. There still has to be, I think there still should be the option, which we already have, but now we're expanding it as per the governor said, school districts do what you you decide. And then we still have, I think, the overarching guide, which is how it impacts operations. Because if we can't transport children, if we can't feed children, if we don't have enough desks for children because we can't move them around quick enough, then, you know, then we can't do it. And those are decisions that our administrators need to make. That's my thinking, even though the motion wasn't so good.
Okay, but I certainly hear you thinking. Okay. Thank you very much. Student trustee Victoria.
Thank you, Madam President. At the last meeting at Hug High School, you guys voted at the end about having students be able to for more students to be able to go to schools. Would that was that impacted by what the governor said today about being able to have more people in person? Does that what you guys voted for go along with that? Would students still continue to be able to go more? Or would we have to make a motion today?
No, we don't. We don't have to. That's a very good question. You know, the governor raised it from 75. Um, you know, the governor raised it from 75% to 100%. So that gives, I mean, that gives room for, um, a- and we know social distancing is going to be relaxed, um, all by May 1st. Right? So that means everybody, every, uh, the schools can put in, get in as many kids as they want to, as they can. Right? And so we don't have to do, um, actually, we don't have to do anything tonight for that to happen. An answer to your question. Um, the conversation was around, and I think it was started by trustee Cottle, is making sure that the community knows that we are looking at learning models and that wouldn't, in particular, hybrid learning, because that's the one that seems to have been the most challenging really. Right? Um, hybrid learning and that we're looking at that. And, um, if we keep that, get rid of that, or whatever the case may be. So, but an answer to your question, no, will we, the motion and the action that we took, um, a few weeks ago, um, it's still, they're still in play. They're still in play. It just changes it because it says governor's directives, which means the governor's directives now change to 100%.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so that's a very good point. She's probably thinking, now what are you guys doing? You don't need to do this. All right. Uh, trustee Manetto and then, uh, trustee Church.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, uh, student, uh, trustee Victoria, that's exactly what I was going to say. I, I'm thinking, didn't we already establish this? Isn't it already in place? And that's why we made that, uh, uh, motion that as the directives change, the leadership, has it changed? Or am I misunderstanding that? That could be two.
No, not, not misunderstanding. I, I think, um, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the motion. The board of trustees directs the superintendent to consider all current governor's directives and the development of additional action plans for the further opening up of schools. That's, that's the motion. That was the motion. That's the action that we're operating under right now. The question is, do we want to change that? Do we, or do we want to go further, um, or change that in any way? That, that's where we are. And we already tried to make a change in one respect to really pull out the hybrid learning piece. That didn't pass. So is there, is it additional, additional consideration? Or are we, are we comfortable with that? And, and, um, some language around, maybe with Dr. Nicolette and trustee Bigpen, I've been discussing in that getting more kids back in school, having more of an opportunity, you know, to bring them for some of the other supports, um, around that, which is, I think, part of the conversation that, um, that they, um, they brought earlier. So trustee Church?
Uh, just a kind of, it popped into my head again. Number one, I reread the existing one, and if we're not going to be specific, I think, I think we don't need another motion. But, um, we have a great communication staff and our new member that came on board, you know, that's going to be included in any press release, any summary, what we do. So I guess my point is the public should be informed, be it by press release and that kind of thing, not necessarily by a motion.
Okay. I hear you. That's certainly a consideration. And as of this time, there's no motion on the floor. And if there isn't going to be a motion on the floor, on that note, we'll just go on to, what, no, we, we, are we in the middle of a presentation? I got a little lost. The first piece of the presentation, which is, oh no, this is the end of it. This is the end of, uh, Dr. Dr. Lamarcus' presentation. Yes, it is.
Right.
Woo!
You have one item left.
Yep, we have one item left, which is the other piece of, of, which actually might change a little bit now with these new directives as well. But anyway, um, yeah, I see, um, uh, I see, uh, vice president Cottle, you may be wanting to make a motion, um, or not, maybe it's conversation, a comment?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. Uh, my concern is if we don't do anything, being that this agenda item has been on our board meetings for months, and sometimes we do something, sometimes we don't, it's like white noise. If, if we don't do something more specific, while yes, we've met open meeting law, but the spirit of it is to let the public know we're taking up a very consequential, um, action that they may just completely miss, because it's just the same item that's been on the agenda for months. And so while we can do that, I, I'm concerned that if we're going to catch people by surprise, and we could catch our staff by surprise, if all of a sudden we're having this conversation under the same agenda item. So that would just be my concern of doing nothing.
Thank you, trustee Cottle. Um, I, I think, I see, I think you're doing like this, counsel?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a chance. Thank you, President Taylor. I think that, let's not forget that agenda items can still be written by trustees. And as long as you get a second trustee to support it, the president will put it on the agenda. Or the president can come up with her own language, or trustee can present her language. You're voting on putting an agenda item for next meeting. It doesn't look like you're getting anywhere at this point, but that might be a solution is to, trustee Cottle, you can sit down, or vice president Cottle, you can sit down, come up with an agenda item that you like, that changes the current one, present it to the board president, if the board president agrees, our board policies give her the authority to put it on, um, excuse me, the next agenda. So, uh, I think that's the answer on, in this circumstance. Your, it seems to me at this point, you can't, you're not moving down, you're not moving this, to use a sports cliche, you're not moving the ball down the field. So you gotta do something here.
Well, I think that, that seems to, to make sense, because we are landing someplace now. And what it may be is, uh, board leadership team, we always meet today after meeting to develop the agenda for the next meeting. And so we can take it up at that time. Um, and that would be, we certainly know, um, here where everybody is. Um, we can have some good conversation about it and make sure that's reflective, um, in the things that we're saying. We have a general idea. We want, we want to make sure mostly what, what I'm hearing from this conversation, which we, which I will be looking for in anything we work together to come up with, is that, um, that the public knows what we're going to be considering. Okay, that's, 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 that's the important piece, to, 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 to greater detail than what they have here. We know they have it, they have, we have it there, but to greater detail to what we have here. So, um, I like that recommendation. And so I'll be looking for, um, any, if there are any, if there's another motion on agenda item 6.04, I'll take it at this time. If not, then we will go on to agenda item 6.03. As you remember, we re-. All right, seeing none, we'll go on to agenda item 6.03. Thank you, though, that was very good discussion. Um, it's a really, really important decision for us to make going forward. And this is just the agenda item. We haven't, we're not even making a decision, we're just trying to get the dang thing on the agenda. So, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll look, we'll look to that and, uh, get ready, get ready to move forward. So 6.03, thank you, Dr. Lamarcus, for all your hard work, um, this whole time. You have really been our connection to making sure our data is in front of us and it is, uh, accurate and it is important and, and all of that. So thank you so much for just jumping into the fire, or you, or you got pushed, I'm not sure which, but for being in the fire.
Good. So Pete Etchar, chief operating officer for this agenda item. And as you mentioned, President Taylor, I mean, this, this agenda item has changed a lot. I've been kind of communicating with a lot of people as this thing has begun and all day long. Uh, and the changes, I'm not sure I've been kept up with all the changes. And so forgive me if I get some of these things wrong. What we heard from the governor just now was that authority for schools, uh, will be going to local school districts and not the county local plan. That does change a lot even from my meeting with the local working group here just a couple hours ago. Um, one thing I want to stress though, is we really need to see the governor's directive. Uh, in the past, it usually came out the end of this week or even up to Monday, before we actually see in writing what the governor's directive actually says. And there's always some, some questions when you see here a press conference and then you actually see it in writing. Things like events, things like what, who's going to cover NIAA, as the superintendent still need to endorse the Washoe County local plan. Uh, we could probably come up with a lot of questions on things that we don't really know 100% the answers to right now. And we need to kind of see that written directive of what we need to put in place for our own Washoe County school district plan and what's already, you know, uh, being covered elsewhere. Uh, one thing that's happened, um, even during this meeting is the board of county commissioners is canceling their meeting for tomorrow. Uh, basically on two things. One is they don't have the endorsements from the local agencies. And two, they also want to assess what the governor's press conference means to them. So they're canceling tomorrow's meeting and they're going to hold it, uh, the discussion on this item, uh, their regular board of county commissioners meeting on April 20th. And, uh, with that being said, the plan was to provide you a presentation on what the local working group put together and what was presented to the board of county commissioners. And then I was going to kind of tell you from the last meeting on April 8th, or what the board of county commissioners had voted to change. And I can still run through that plan if that is your desire to kind of let you know where that, that stands. But again, a lot has changed since even this meeting has begun.
Um, if I may, um, Pete, I, I appreciate that, thank you. If I may, um, I'm going to say, um, no. Uh, just because it's, it's, there's, there's nothing to it at this point. Everything that you will present to us is subject to change. Um, and will most likely be impacted in a significant way, um, before we really need to come and do something about it. Um, it's, um, I, I know that you're prepared, because as staff you always are, and you always are, Pete, I know that. But it just doesn't make sense for us to go through a plan and go through what we submitted, that then might be changed. And then they didn't change it anyway, but then they did and they endorsed it, they did. And then the whole thing is probably going to be blown up and be something completely different, um, in the next few days or so. So it just doesn't make, it doesn't seem as though it's the best usage of our time. Now, you're in it day-to-day, you know, um, directly, if you think there's something in there that might be helpful, um, then certainly I'm o- o- open to that, because I don't want us, I'm certainly don't want to keep us from information that would be valuable to us. But I just don't know, um, how valuable it would be at this point, because it's, it's not even, it's, I can't even say it's a moving target, we don't even have a target right now.
I, I would say that in the Washoe County local mitigation plan, we were but, very minor players in that plan. Because really, all of our directives came from the state of Nevada, so we were under their authority. Now, that obviously just changed here in the last couple hours. And so that, 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 those directives are now coming to us. And so that we now are going to be making some of those decisions. And like I said, I don't know exactly what that's going to mean. And like I said, I don't know if, if the superintendent is still going to have to endorse the Washoe County's plan. As far as Washoe County's plan, as I said, they moved their meeting to April 20th to discuss this. And then they've also moved when it's going to be presented to the state task force. That is now going to be on April 22nd, uh, because of that delay. So we'll see where that goes. We'll know more here, hopefully in the next few days of what, how involved we need to be with that Washoe County plan. When it comes to developing our plan, like I said, I've got a lot of questions and we'll have to work on those. And I know, uh, the superintendent already has that on our meeting agenda for tomorrow, for our internal team to start discussing that. But again, we may not have all the answers yet from the state that we need to, to know. But we will start working on what that plan means for us. The major impact to us in the Washoe County local plan was on events, on major events. And basically the rules were is, if the event's going to be held on our property, whether it's an outside group or a local group, then it's our rules. And that means the state rules. That's kind of where we had been. But when it came to large events and what the social distancing rules were and how many people could attend, like at a graduation ceremony, that's where we were going to be involved with the state. Now, you know, the, the rules have changed again. So we will have to really look at that. And I agree with you, it'll probably change two or three more times, I don't know, between now and, you know, and when we get this put together. So if there's any questions that any of the trustees have of me, of, of what the plan was and how it changed, I'd be more than glad to do my best to answer. I can't say I'm an expert in the entire plan. Uh, I only really got involved with the, the part that, uh, really impacted us the most. But I can say that the team did an amazing work, and I got to thank Adam Seracini for really tag teaming this with me and being a representative for the school district on this. The team did a great job of reaching out to the community and having a lot of meetings with all the impacted groups, from bars and restaurants, convenience stores, you know, the lo- large, uh, local event organizations, you name it. They really did a great job. And I think the, the input from those organizations was outstanding, back to the work, the working team. This plan was put together, you know, based on what we heard from them, on what was working, the struggles they were having, and you know, where they would like things to go. So I, I mean, it was really, uh, a, a big effort to put this together. And again, it may be out the window now, but I, I really thank that team for the incredible work they put together. And really, it sounds like also that that plan with the county going forward is really a plan for one month. It's a plan from May 1st to May 31st, with June 1st all of a sudden being a totally different plan. So a lot of work went into that, uh, a lot of, a lot of hours went into that. But again, it's a dynamic situation that we've never faced before, and we all understand that.
Thank you very much, Pete. Appreciate that. Um, we'll go to trustee Bigpen.
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks, Pete and Adam, for all your hard work on this. I, it's very hard to build a foundation on shifting sands, right? Um, so I am just curious to know, um, how, how closely are we able to work with the county on, you know, a new plan? Or, or whatever the next steps may look like? I just want to, I'm curious to know, uh, i- if, if that is a, if, if there's effective communication happening essentially, if, if, uh, you know, we're all together in this, if that makes sense?
It is. And I was on a working team meeting, group, working group meeting today at 2:00, and that was being discussed. And I think the communication is there between the working group members. I can't really say what's going on politically too awfully much. But I know the team is working to try to find solutions from what, you know, the county, what the changes they want to make and, and how, uh, agreeable the cities, the hospital association, the, the county health district would be to those changes that the county present. I don't know. I don't know. You know, I, I think we've all heard a little bit, uh, of, of what was accepted then or not. But I think the communication's there, and I think that's the other reason for the delay, is they really want another week to kind of work with those local agencies so that the county, Reno, Sparks, Hospital Association, the Health District can come together and really talk this through. I think that's where they're at. And I don't know if we'll still be a member. You know, I'd love to see that detail of whether we're still going to be any way, shape or form part of that local plan, or if we're out and our, our energy can all go into developing a Washoe County school district plan.
Yeah, I mean, my hope is that, you know, all the players, ca- because, you know, we're a big player in all of this. Our schools, you know, ha- have an effect on everything. So my hope is that they can all work with us and our teams here at the school district to make sure we're all speaking the same language and, and what's going to happen. Um, because there, it's so intricate and it's all so very fragile at the moment that I think it's just a really critical time after this news. So, yeah, that's my hope as well.
Thank you very much, trustee Bigpen. Are there any other questions for, uh, Pete or Adam? Um, gentlemen, we know you were prepared for the, for, uh, for the meeting and for the presentation, but based upon the governor's, um, latest directive, then, um, all of those, uh, plans seem to be moved. And like you said, we may not even be on the team anymore. They, they, we may have been voted off the island. Okay? Seeing nothing? Okay. Well, thank you very much. Um, and we look forward then, um, to coming back. I'm sure we'll be on the agenda for next time, so we can see what is the update on that? What does that look like? And what is our role? We'll know a whole lot more about it then. So thanks to you both. All right. Let's move it on to our agenda. That will go for agenda items, uh, 6.03 and 6.04, in a different order. We'll go down to, um, uh, agenda item 7, 7.01, student representative report. Student trustee Victoria?
All right, thank you, Madam President. Um, for the past couple of board meetings, I haven't been able to present. So this is a letter that, um, our students that all attended to the town halls were able to create, um, for our superintendent and just letting her know a little bit more about what we would like to see in our district. So I'm going to read it. Um, dear superintendent, Dr. Chris, Dr. Kristic McNeil and board of trustees, on behalf of the student advisory council, I would like to thank you for attending our virtual town hall on equity and inclusion on December 15th, 2020. During the event, we heard many ideas from students about what they would like to see in our schools. Following our discussion, we asked students to tell us what they would change if they could be the superintendent for the day. Students suggested several actions they want district staff, school administrators and teachers to take, and I wanted to share some of those with you. Students appreciate what you are already doing in the Washoe County school district and are calling for even more action. In addition, many students are willing and eager to be working with you on making these important adjustments to our schools. And these are a couple of points that they said. Uh, adjust the curriculum to include more diverse perspectives for people of color, diverse cultures, and the LGBTI, LGBTQIA+ community, as well as classes that teach life skills, politics and current events in society. Also, as returning foreign language classes such as Spanish to schools. Incorporate, incorporate international in the school year to allow students and staff opportunities to learn about diverse cultures. Support an environment of acceptance by responding swiftly to all instances of bullying and discrimination and including more staff from diverse cultures, groups and sexual and gender orientations. And also creating more just schools by taking steps to eradicate system barriers by allowing banners in the classrooms to promote change, allowing teachers to openly support students to create a safe space and allowing time for dialogue and debate about different views. Finally, students Finally, students want to feel more connected with their school community while distance and believe this would be improved if they have more communication, both one-on-one and in groups with teachers and other students. Thank you again for supporting the students in the Washoe County school district and listening to our voices. We hope you find our suggestions helpful. May they inspire you to solicit further student voice and partnership as we work towards an equitable school system. Sincerely, Victoria Gomez, the Washoe County School District Student Advisory Council President, the Washoe County School District Student Advisory Council and the Town Hall Student Participants.
Very well done, very well done. Absolutely, very, very, very well done. Let me find my reactions and put my, put my applause up there. There we are, all right.
Thank you.
No, wait, go ahead.
I'm sorry about that. And with what we've been able to get from these town halls, I assess the student advisory council have started different projects that we've learned that are really important to the district and would revolve around these specific topics that got brought up in the town halls. So in the next couple of weeks, or if you are able to join us at the next SAC meeting, that will be on Monday, the twenty-sixth of April. From four to six, we will be able to talk about those projects and discuss a little bit more about how you can help us in better supporting them.
Awesome. Thank you, thank you very much. That was, that was outstanding. And it's really good to have all that come together after all the town halls. And here are some of the things basically that, that you guys have come up with together as a student. So we appreciate the student voice that, that we have in this district. And we really appreciate the fact that our students aren't afraid to use it.
Thank you.
Right, I, I think, I think, I think I can speak for all of us and say that we, we like to hear from the students. Because at the end of the day, that's what we're here for, so. So thank you very much, thank you very much. Top that, Superintendent McNeil.
I don't know. That's going to be really hard, President Taylor. Awesome job, Victoria. Love the letter. I really, really do. It means a lot to us. So thank you. And please, please thank your, your colleagues as well too for that.
Thank you, I will.
Some good news here, as you all know, Sparks High School, right? Go Railroaders. And they had the five-A regional soccer championship. And then also our girls' soccer team over at Galena won their third straight regional championship game on Saturday versus Douglas. So congratulations to the Grizzlies and the Railroaders for that. Super proud of them. Just another shout-out and reminder for our drive-in event tomorrow at six-thirty at the El Rancho Drive-In. We're hoping to get almost three-hundred-and-fifty families over there to learn some techniques around teams and, and technology. And then also tomorrow evening, our communications team is putting together a connect ed message that will be our first communication around our summer school plans. And so that's going to be going out to families tomorrow in a connect ed format all around our super exciting summer school plans. Try and say that five times super fast. And then finally, just another shameless plug for our strategic plan and budget survey. So that is right on our website. We need as many, many people, our staff, our public, students, please participate in that strategic plan and budget survey. It closes on April twenty-third. And with that, Madam President, that is my report.
Okay, thank you very much to both of you. JJ, you popped on, I was, I hadn't even forgotten to ask for public comment. But thank you, just in case. Public comment, we did have a little bit come in. JJ?
The board received emails from Walt Green, Kristen Knutson, Adrian Bemis, Shawna Lane, Gail Corthell and Beth Martin.
Okay, thank you very much. And thanks for all of you who, who have watched and sent in your public comment as a reminder. Those public comment emails, although we just read your name, those emails, we read them. We didn't have a lot, but we had opportunities to go ahead and take a look. If you haven't, please make sure that you do. Trustees, I didn't remind us enough tonight, but make sure that you do continue to read. We didn't get a bunch in during the meeting tonight, but we did get some. And because we're at home, we can have different screens and look at them and, and read and see what constituents are saying. And thanks to all of you again, send them in those, those emails. Those public comments are made a part of the official record for the meeting. Will be added to the minutes. Again, it takes a few days to get those up and so on, as, as well as it takes a few days to get the final YouTube up. But the live one is there. And so just know that that's happening and you will be a part of the formal, formal record for the meeting. Okay, I believe that's everything. We just did our public comment next meeting. We just talked about it, April twenty-seventh. And that's agenda items eight-point-zero-two, eight-point-zero-three. We are adjourned.